Okay, so welcome everyone. It is 7:01 PM on October the 10th. And I'm gonna call to order this meeting of our regular meeting of the Wellington Board of Education. Okay, yeah, I gotta.
That's you on the mouse.
Me and the mouse, okay. I'm running two screens here.
Oh, good.
That's okay. Um, we start our meetings off with pledge allegiance, so if you wanna let that person in. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Lovely, that sounds altogether not. Okay, welcome everyone. We've got a handful of people who've joined us in the waiting room or in on the Zoom room. So I will mention that we start our meetings off with President to speak. We invite the public to bring their concerns to the Board of Education. At the start and end of every meeting, we ask that you start with your name and address for the record and limit your comments to three minutes. Is you are currently on Zoom and would like to speak, if you could either raise your hand or come on screen and we'll be able to recognize you then. Carrie, I see your hand is up.
Hi there, Carrie Rainville, Potter School Road. I am currently the president of the Wellington PTA. I am here tonight to mention some of our current and upcoming events that we have happening for our Wellington kids and residents. We have one more week of our Limon Pie and Cookie Dough fundraiser to raise funds for student enrichment. Thank you to all that have participated. We're blown away by the support that we have received so far. If anyone would like to place an order or take a peek at anything that they have to offer, we have our QR code and forms in the Center School Digital Backpack, as well as at the Wellington Post Office, the Town Hall, the Library, Wellington Pizza One, and we have posted the information on our local town Facebook groups. We also have this Friday, October 13th, the PTA is sponsoring a Board of Ed Candidate Forum for our parents and community members to come down and meet the candidates for the Board of Election this November, Board of Ed Election this November. This nonpartisan event will be held at Center School Gym from 6:00 to 7:30 October, I'm sorry, Friday, October 27th, from 6:30 to 8:00 is our annual PTA Trunk or Tree Event. We are in need of some more trunks, as well as some more volunteers to help make this fun, a fun night for our kids. We, and we all know how the weather has been lately, so the rain date for this event is Saturday, October 28th. And last but not least, on Tuesday, November 7th, we'll be holding our annual bake sale outside of the Town Office Building. Stop before, stop by before or after you vote to pick up some baked goods. All proceeds go in support of the Dollars for Scholars Fund. Be on the lookout for opportunities to donate baked goods or volunteer for our table. And if anyone is interested in submitting questions for the forum, signing up for the trunk, to host a trunk, or volunteering at the Trunk or Tree, or if you're interested in donating baked goods, please contact us at membership.willingtonpta@gmail.com. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Carrie. Seems like a busy season. We appreciate your stepping on because I'm sure lots of people will get information this way. If there's anyone else on the call who would like to speak, if you can raise your hand using the reactions button, or if you come on screen or off of mute for the one person who called in, we can recognize you at that point. Hi Heather, I see you. If you wanna come off mute, or if you can make that happen.
Hi.
There we go. Hi Heather.
Hi. I was just joining the meeting for now.
Welcome. Well, we're glad you're here. Okay, I'm not seeing anyone else who wants to comment at this time. You'll have another opportunity at the end of the meeting. But we'll move on to the Chairman's Report. I have two items for the report this month. One is that the Cabe Conference Registration has gone live. Some of us are up for election. We don't know if we're going to have the opportunity to participate this year. But in either case, if it makes sense for those people who are not up for reelection, if you're interested in doing so, to contact Brenda, Phil Secretary, so that we can make sure that we have everything lined up. And after the election, you know, Phil or Brenda will reach out to those winners of those four seats to see if we can have a whole team go. It's both Friday and Saturday that weekend, 18th and 19th?
Great.
It's Friday and Saturday around November 18th or 19th, whatever that Friday and Saturday is. I'm not looking at my calendar.
Seventeenth and eighteenth.
Seventeenth and eighteenth, always a day on the Dollars for.
Four.
Okay. Seventeenth and eighteenth, it's in Mystic, and we can carpool if that makes sense. It's usually a lot of good information. In addition, there were a number of new laws passed this session by the Connecticut General Assembly, one of which is a change to the Regulations for Premium of Information Act. So with that, Boards of Education are going to be required to post, I think it's also other agencies too. It's not just Port of Ed, but it affects us. We'll be posting the materials that go with the agenda, the backup materials, when we have them on the website, or as soon as we have them on the website at that point. So for example, the packet that we got in advance at this meeting with the last month's minutes, and maybe a financial report, those, when they get sent out to us, they'll also go up on the website. So you might wanna tell people who follow our meetings regularly that they'll be able to find our materials. Of course, there are things that happen. We want the most up-to-date information. And there will be some things that happen, you know, literally, Phil takes them hot off the printer and brings them into the meeting. And at that point, they will go up online as soon as possible, the next, you know, business day when Brenda's here to do so. But there will be a one place, one-stop shop for people to find things, which is also really helpful for us. So when we're looking for things, we can find them all. Don't have to dig through our email or if something was handed out, and we would know exactly where it is and don't have to keep all that paper. So you can get rid of your paper. If you wanna get rid of your paper, if you love your paper, you may keep your paper. No judgment. Okay. So that's all I had for the Chairman's Report. Next up is Communications. Nothing. Okay, moving right along then. Let's go to the Superintendent Report.
Yeah, so I'll move through a bunch of this stuff here. So since the last meeting, we had a letter of resignation from Leilani Arno. She's the Librarian Para-Educator. And it's already been filled. Olivia Rovellino, she transferred into that position. She was the one that was doing the World Language Program for us. And so she moved into that. The World Language, obviously, position is now open. We are interviewing candidates for that, which is good. There's some people in that. We actually hired Carrie Rainville, who was speaking a moment ago. She is at Center Schools, a staff support specialist. We had an opening for Special Education at Center School. We filled that. He doesn't start until November, I think it is. That's Steve Nappi. And then we just hired Alexis Martin as an HMS Parrot Crusher, so making some strides with staff, and we're pretty lucky, not too many openings. The second thing that's on there is just budget priorities. The admin team and I are already working on a 24-25 budget. If you wanna share any recommendations in advance, I know Donna had some good feedback last year about just, you know, can you make sure you put in things that are contractual? I'll continue to try and do those things, but if you have additional comments, things you would like us to consider as we build the budget on our side, please let me know because it's much easier to do it on the front side, obviously, than it is to react. So any of that, I am doing this earlier than I've ever done it before, just so you know. And it's really because I am worried about some of the expected increases, and particularly around Special Education, that program rate. So that is the budget priority, so email me, please. The roof grants, I will tell you, I sent off a communication to the Commissioner of the Department of Administrative Services last week. That's connected to the Office of School Construction Grants and Review. I wanted the DAS Commissioner to really understand how our project was canceled, because it is a newer Commissioner, and that was canceled in '21. I asked for a meeting. I got a response back that basically said, "We got your letter." I'm not sure where it's gonna go. So my intent here is that in their cancellation letter, it did say, "If you don't do any school projects, such as a new school or a renovation, we will accept the application that you put in." So we don't have to redo all of our work. I shared that letter with them and said, "So let's have a conversation." It's been kind of quiet. I will keep you posted on how that goes, but I'm gonna be honest, I'm impressed a little bit about that. Because it was a lot of work, and it's what they stated that means. Alright? The HVAC grants, I participated in an HVAC Grant Webinar last week. I did learn that the state is looking again for shovel-ready projects. This is the second grant they've had. And the applications are due in December of this year. We're not even close to that, I'll tell you, because you have to have a plan for that grant. And we need HVAC professionals to identify what we're gonna do to move forward. So the good news is, and especially for HMS in that area, the good news for us is that we learned that there's an additional $150 million slated for year three for an HVAC Grant. It's in the same like amount, same legislation. And that would be an expectation of a December of '24 application, which we should be able to meet. I do think we're gonna be ready for that, and I went back today just to look at who got the prior grants and who didn't, because there were towns that didn't. And every single one of the towns did not get the grant. It's almost true for every single one, that they didn't have the things in place, such as the funding on the town side. People applied anyways, figuring it's worth a shot. None of them got it. So the grants were pretty big. Coventry got, I think it was 6 million. There are some big bucks in this, so I wanna make sure we can get a professional to say, "This is what we need," whether it's heating, cooling, ventilation, however you wanna look at it, fresh air intakes, all those things. And so I will share more about that later on when we get to the CIP projects in the agenda. Good news, the HMS Clubs, I have biggest numbers I've ever seen. We had a tremendous response to the club offerings this year. We're not doing soccer. We couldn't get coaches. I'm not sure if that's one of the reasons why. But we have 93 kids signed up for clubs. In a school, that's more than half of our kids at HMS, which is huge. So a portion of those clubs are funded by Board of Ed Budget, and then there's a portion that's funded through Title IV, the grants. I'll tell you that I'm keeping an eye on it, because the number of kids that we have, which is a good problem. The number of kids in the program that need transportation home. We have about 35 kids on each bus, and we're worried that the, we only have two buses. That's gonna be a long ride. So we're kinda keeping track of that. We'll see if we need to add a third bus. Obviously, there's a cost to it. Last year, we used some of the non-lapsing fund to pay for some of that cost. So I'll keep you posted on it, but 93 kids is amazing.
And that's just HMS?
Just HMS at this point in time. The reading waiver, the state finally signed a contract with PCG, that's Public Consulting Group. The state hired an outside agency to review all of the school districts that submitted a reading waiver, because we didn't wanna use one of their five programs, they said, was comprehensive. It was gonna be crazy amounts of money, and we'd already done a lot of the work. So there were 80 districts that submitted that reading waiver, were one of them. I sat through the waiver and basically learned that every district that applied for that waiver is gonna get 25 minutes to meet with PCG and basically present your case. They are not gonna make a judgment right then and there, and they're not supposed to tell you which way they're leaning. But they have a rubric. Ultimately, the decision is made by the State Department of Ed and the Commissioner's Office. I think we have a really good argument, but they're gonna be the ones to make that decision. So stay tuned. I thought I'd have more information already on that, because we wrote that waiver a long time ago. It's been pretty delayed. So stay tuned on that. And then upcoming events, we had, recently had our Cricket of Nights. We had a couple of folks there visiting. Parents and grandparents. It was a great, great night, well-attended. And then Carrie stole my thunder, because I was gonna do some of that PTA house face, which she just made, so thanks Carrie for doing that. Any of those PTA events are coming up. And my other, I'm glad I put this on, because there was, this just happened, as you said. So two things, we've got some more money. I had written a long time ago, a school security grant that was sitting. We had applied our bills and we weren't hearing anything, and we sent them an email to check in with them. We just learned that we are getting tomorrow a check for $15,700. And because we believe it was Board of Ed funds and not the town funds, CIP, it's gonna come back into a special line for the Board of Ed. So Donna will create a grant line. We just need to confirm all the items that were purchased, were purchased through Board of Ed lines and not CIP. And in the same breath, I got another email that was also the more recent security grant. And we believe we're gonna get $27,000, $27,500 of that one. And that was again, something we've already done out of Board of Ed funds, and that was the cameras. That's what we believe it is. So that's actually a nice pocket of money to keep doing some of those security upgrades as they go. But Donna's intending to put it back into a general board line, so it allows you to have some flexibility. Something comes up, well, I mean, whatever it is, that you can hold on that to use that. So that's exciting stuff. More money.
Okay, are there any questions on any of the pieces in the sitting agenda if they're done? One question is, for the HMS Clubs, if a student wants to start a club, do you wanna do that relatively easily?
They can go through and talk to the principal, and just try and, as long as they can get the correct number of people into the club that they want. We're typically not running clubs for three or four students, you know, if they start hitting eight, 10, we, that's where we start to consider it. I can't even tell you what clubs they have this time around, because it literally just came out. But I'll let you know what clubs are being offered this time, so you can see what they are.
And each club has an adult associated with it. So it's not only the kids, they have to recruit then an adult who's gonna be the.
Some share it between a couple people, and then some people do it by themselves, but every club has a staff.
Thank you. I have a question about the World Language opening. Are you looking for a World Language teacher, or there's still just nothing out there?
It's such a shortage area, and what we've seen, and we'll find out real quick if it was the person who's doing a good job. Olivia Rovellino really had it going well, running well, I think. We will see if that's the case when we put somebody new in there. But I think the kids are more engaged with language, just because there's some choice in it. And we'd lose that choice if we go back to try and find, to try and find a World Language teacher. What I'll tell you is one of the applicants I've already seen come through, speaks multiple languages.
Okay, that was my next question. Are you, are you looking for a multi-language person?
In my opinion, a great candidate. So they gotta be able to manage a classroom, and they have to be decent with technology. It's in our ad. And, you know, having the language piece is also a huge factor. So we'll see what happens. I'll tell you what, we've been really lucky with our staffing, just across the board. Looking at the number of openings across, so I'm thinking this is gonna be no different. So we'll see.
Okay. I just had one other question, which I, which I kind of hate to ask, but if we don't get the reading waiver, what happens?
It's gonna be interesting, because I think if we don't get it, there's gonna be a lot of difference that don't get it. And if that's the case, when you figure there's, let's just say, half of the 80 don't get it, and there's 40 districts, 25% don't get the reading waiver, I think they're gonna get some pushback.
So their, their thought is, if they don't give us the waiver, we're supposed to buy, pay for this other.
There's funding in it. What I'll tell you is, and you know, she's smiling over here, because Ashford is buying a program. There's money in the grants for it. There's, they're sitting there, it's sitting there right now. If your waiver's approved, you can use that same grant funding to keep your programs going and add to your programs. If, if you don't get it approved, and this is one of the reasons why we didn't, we are writing our grant really in general, is because if you don't get the waiver, at least you're gonna have some money there to apply to it. My feeling is it's $100,000 to buy a program. In a small district, picture some of these big districts, and that's what I say, if they don't get the waivers, and that's not a small change, think about all the professional development that we've done. It's significant. There's, and there's some quirky things tied to some of the money. And I'll give you an example. So as part of that grant, you have to have, create a reading panel on your staff, and you have to go through professional development through the state. I would argue, our staff, every single one of our staff members that teaches ELA, is, is doing or has done letters training. They won't accept that. So they're getting some pushback, and we're not the only ones that did letters training. So they're getting some pushback on some of those things. It'll be interesting to see how it plays out. I'm not gonna hit the panic button, if we don't get a waiver, though. I think we'll just find a way to resubmit, to resubmit a waiver, and hopefully, if we don't get it, we will learn why. And if we had to fill, you know, APs, we could do that. But it's, it's gonna be an interesting process.
So you learn that there's some great new money on the HVAC Grant. They've got a year and three on that. So what's the possibility of there being limited funds for the roof grant? Because I know this has been going on for a while, and this is not a new grant that's out there, so I'm just wondering if you have any idea what might be.
What do you mean, limited?
Because when a grant is out of money, it's out of money, so I'm just.
Not that one.
Okay.
Yeah, that one, that one just keeps going.
Okay.
The HVAC is tied to some of the coronavirus funds, and it's actually a different application process. So it's not on our EGMS system, which is where all of our title grants are. Typically, anything we do for grants is EGMS. This one is not.
Okay.
So I think the end of that third year, I would be surprised. If they have any additional funds, I think it would be rollover, if they are allowed an extra year of that grant. So maybe there might be a fourth year of whatever's left over. The other option, and this is always the battle, is that, and you'll hear in CIP tonight, like there's certain things that apply for a grant, you know, you can get the grant for it through the state, through a CGR, and a lot of items that don't. There's an argument that HVAC should be one of those items, that it should be on there, along, the roofs are on there, right? The windows are a piece of it. Like, there's certain things that are, are not. There's a very large argument right now that HVAC should be on there just for, just a question of can they fund it?
Yeah, I just wanna make, I wanna make sure, I know the roots are a major, major concern. I wanna make sure that, you know, I know we have to wait a little bit on it, but I just wanna make sure there's not a risk of being out.
Not that, not that I know of.
Well, the risk is that the grant won't be approved. Not every grant is approved.
Okay.
So, you know, it's not a sure thing at all.
Right, sure.
But it won't, it won't be because the grant ended. It'll be because we didn't score high enough up the list, except the priorities are bold.
Yeah.
Or at least they can, and we may or may not be on their priority list.
But that's every month. We can apply for that every month.
Oh, okay.
So like, they don't, not, they give you the response right away, but if we didn't get it, the next month, we can apply again. And if they said, "We didn't, you didn't get it because of X, Y, and Z."
We can fix it.
Change X, Y, and Z.
This is, this is the roof one, right? So, but what you're saying is, you can continue to use the application from '21? So every month, you can get the same amount?
Well, we'll try it, we'll try it once, and then you fix, you fix the problem.
You don't reply to me, we just keep it.
No, no, you have to wait. You have to wait till you get an answer. You get an answer, then you send and submit it. Okay, alright.
The challenge is, is that you, you're, the grant process, there's a lot of information. And when they cancel that, we already had approvals. And now that the cost is going up, the cost is going up to the tower. And so I'm gonna, if I can get in front of the Commissioner, I'm gonna let her know, like, you're the ones that canceled this. There was no reason to cancel. There's nothing statutorily that says they should have canceled it. Basically, that process should have been that if we built a new school, or we did a renovation, a major renovation, we would have lost those funds and we would have had to repay them. That's not what happened. They just outright canceled them, because that's what he wanted to do. So my question is, we were gonna have reimbursement rate, and could they potentially fund a difference? Because it's not gonna be $800,000 anymore. It's gonna be nine. And that, because if we have to do that, we have to go back to town meeting. We have to put more money in the budget. We have to go redo our applications, because all those dollar matters, dollars are, you know, it's, it'll be an interesting conversation, so I think they're digesting my letter, let's just say.
There's a case to be lit.
Yes.
So we've been talking about with HVAC kind of pairing with the roofs. Would it make sense to hold off the roofs until we can do them together?
So you can't even do it together, but it's, it's not that they can't survive without the other one. It's probably easier if you do them together. What I will tell you is, you have the million dollars right now, and this is part of your CIP conversation a little bit too, but you have the million dollars that's, that was approved for General Projects or Board of Ed. There's a question of whether or not that's gonna be enough money to cover the roof projects, whole roof projects. So, and there's also a backlog of, to get materials. So it's, it's, there's some, I don't know if it's the, it should be, there's some sort of barrier. It's, it's, you know, I'm not sure what it is that's, there's a backlog. So we would have a hard time putting in a new roof, from what I understand, July 1 of '24. But if we get everything going, the HVAC grant will save time.
That would be great.
Yes. We will save time all the time. I'm just, I wanna push the state a little bit on the roof project, because I, my personal feeling is there should be some ownership there. They took ownership of canceling it, they need to take some ownership over it.
We have stayed with it.
So.
Hey, one thing that wasn't in your report that we had mentioned previously, you were gonna update, was everybody's health status. And you had done that last month. We had a couple of cases of flu and COVID, and are we.
I don't even wanna say it.
How are we gonna.
We had a little bit of a bubble. The nurses and I were, were, like, we'd look each other and look away, because we were getting a little nervous, and settled back down. We do have some, you know, some minor illness out there, but not major cases of COVID, wiping things out, it's been. Because we, but we bubbled up a little bit September. No, you know, cohorts where we were, where you could track things.
But it settled back down.
It has settled back down.
Okay. Thank you for that.
I don't even wanna say that out loud.
Okay, except you're gonna have to put that as a standing item, because I'm gonna ask anybody.
Okay.
So, right, right. Okay.
Exactly.
Uh, I, next item is our financial reports.
Screen here. Alright. Big enough? You wanna make it a little bigger?
No, that's, that's reasonable.
Decent? Okay. So you can see, obviously, the update on the current budget. We have started to apply some of the grants that have come in. We have not applied Title I yet, and you, I put the dollar amounts on there, just because it's, it's, those programs one and two are a little low right now, but you can see it's, there's gonna be an additional 31 in one, and additional 38,000 in Program Two. So they will bounce back. One thing I asked Donna to do a little bit different this year, I'm, the more I kinda go through this process, I like to present you with a report that is more accurate for what we expect as we go along the year, because sometimes you look at it, and you're like, feel you're nervous, but there's $700,000 in there, and it, it's hard to convey that. So there's two sub-lines that were in here, and it was, it was like, almost $70,000 that it was in the budget, and it was, it's, it's always been there, and we've never encumbered the full amount. We've just encumbered each month as we've gone along, but we've always used that full amount, almost every dollar. So I said, "Can we just encumber the full amount?" And it was a behind-the-scenes issue for us, because typically, it was encumbered by a person, because we were paying that person. But they found a way to encumber the block of money, and then just adjusted back to pay that person. So we did that Program 10, so if you compare your prior, your, your prior reports, there, and you wanna know why there's a big difference, that's one of the things. We encumbered subs for the year there. Obviously, if it's, you know, too, if we have too much money towards the end, it would just move back. But at least we know, you know, if you use this amount for subs, that it's, it's there. The other thing is, in that Program 10, it's typically where you see savings. We've, they've done some cleaning up of that with new staff coming in, and staff that have left, whether they take insurance or not. We expect by November, or next month, that we'll have that, all that. We expect by November or next month that we'll have that, all the new staff and. And the only people that wouldn't be reflected on there is if there's an open position. So if I came in and now I'm taking family benefits and, uh, and the person that left was waiving insurance. Obviously, I'm gonna cost you more money, it's gonna come off that balance, so. We have a, we're not sure that seventy two thousand right now is real. Um, but that's typical, and we also took that face holder out, so. Um, that's a number that we're, we watch closely at this time of year and it'll be squared away, so. Questions about that financial report?
Okay, let's go on to the final funding, we're towards the last.
Okay. So this is the first final, uh, I'll say that, so this is the twenty two twenty three. Um, budget and you can see that we're returning two hundred and seventy eight thousand dollars. It is mainly, uh, from staffing and insurance. Those are the two areas, uh, and this first page is like three pieces to this attack. So, um. If you remember, I never liked. Making transfers and making your final report show up where there was a zero on something because you couldn't see what was reality. Um, last year was a little bit of an anomaly because you had a bunch of money that we used to projects. But if you zeroed out program one and it had a remaining balance of zero, you would know that it was a hundred and thirteen thousand dollar shortfall if that was part of you, it wasn't. Right, part of your final report, so, um, we're kinda doing this in three parts, so. Here's part one where the 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 savings. You know, what programs had savings and what programs had reasonable bounds and where the shortage was and why there was a shortage. I double check these all with Donna, we go back and forth and and make sure they're in the right spots. The second page here. Goes into what the transfer should would be. Because we're required to zero out our programs. So we can't just leave that a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars in the hole, we have to put it back to zero. Which is why I would like a three quarter entity or budget part here. So those would be our recommended, Donna's and mine recommended transfers, um, and it basically says what the projects were for. And where they come from, all of, we would transfer everything out of fringe. And it would cover, it was zero out the program one, program two, program six, and program seven. And then the last page, if you make those transfers, is where you see the zero out. And she kinda did a a little bit of a red flag for us, you can see that, um. Uh, we missed that one, now with them all parentheses where we just made the changes. So if you make those changes that I'm recommending to you. Um, you would return two hundred and seventy eight thousand, one hundred and thirty six dollars. Uh, and you do have to act on those transfers, I do not have the capacity to do that by myself, I have to, I have to do that with a certain amount of money. So those, so if anybody wants to make a motion, it would be to transfer these these right here, program one to, uh, seven, you should say the. To what program and what program it's coming from and and the balance, and yes, it can be done in one place.
I'll, I'll try, then run this. And make a motion that we transfer. One hundred and thirteen thousand, seven hundred and eighteen dollars from fringe benefits substitutes to see.
Other program one?
Well, that's correct.
To program one, CBS Elementary School. We transfer two thousand four hundred and sixty from fringe benefits slash substitutes to program two HMS Middle School. We transfer fourteen thousand, two hundred and forty five from fringe benefits slash substitutes to program six curriculum and staff development. And we transfer eighteen thousand, nine hundred and ninety five dollars from fringe benefits slash substitutes to program seven utilities.
Yeah.
Uh, this will try the second. Uh, any questions about the final report? I just wanna say I thank you for doing it that way because it was very clear, yeah.
I think it it's a better view for the public to to understand. Why a sign would be in the negative, so we, we have a full budget that we look at.
Fair enough. Okay, so, uh, let's move ahead to vote then, all in favor of the motion to move the. Amounts from fringe benefits into those four accounts as stated in the motion, signify by saying aye or raising your hand.
Aye.
And it's unanimous, so, uh, motion carries. So, next.
Yeah, is non lapping, so that non lapping fund request. Um, based upon what you are returning now, uh, from the twenty to the town from the twenty two twenty three budget. I'm gonna recommend you request the Board of Finance maximize. Your non lapping account to help offset two additional unbudgeted special education out placements that we have. Um, the maximum amount, and this is what kind of this grid lays out for you, and I can make this a little bit better, it's a little bit small. Um, the maximum amount that you can have in the account is is based upon your policy and that is. Two hundred and seventy four thousand, five hundred and forty four dollars. The third row of the chart shows that, um, shows what was in the account, it was two hundred and fifty eight thousand, seven hundred and thirty two dollars. And what was spent, and so you, we applied a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to this year's budget. And so you have a balance of of approximately a one hundred eleven thousand, one hundred and thirty two dollars currently. And when you subtract that from the maximum amount that you can have, uh, in that account. You would have a request for one hundred and sixty three thousand, four hundred and twelve dollars. Um, I was pretty upfront, uh, along this process of returning money. Of saying that I would return a minimum of two hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. That we would request a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, go back into our non lapping and a hundred and twenty five would just go flat back to the town. Um, I think we have a pretty solid argument that we have two additional out placements, um, it is what this money is gonna be useful, I can tell you that. Um, that I just think it's fair to ask for the one, the full one sixty three to maximize your account. Because you have two additional out placements, and that is after that one that's already on there. So that one fifty is already what we applied, and that's how it came down to one of that.
I think that came from last year's.
Correct.
So there's two additional beyond that.
On top, yeah, and that's, so there's a hundred and eleven thousand right now. And you would wanna bring it back up because you're just gonna spend a bunch again when you pay for those out placements.
And how is that maximum determined?
So it's, uh, it's, it's like three percent of your current budget. It's, I think it's, it's something like that, it's, it's what's in your, um, policy, and actually, did I? Oh, we're that perfect, then I did it, there's the policy.
Is it subject to change?
So, the part of it is our policy, there's a portion that's our policy of where we've made that determination. And part of it is the, um, statute. The statute now, it used to be one percent, now it's two percent.
Okay.
Our, our piece, the three, the three percent, I think is board policy, which I, listen, that's a fair number, I think it's a reasonable number.
Okay.
Uh, for a budget our size, um, if you had a twenty million dollar budget, I'd say you might, you know.
Yeah.
Well, with that.
But that thirty percent would be higher.
Correct.
Yeah, right, yeah, yes. Okay. And just that with the special needs, you know, maximum.
And some years we won't be it at all, I mean, we've had years where the flow's gone the other direction, we.
Why you applied a hundred and fifty last?
So, you know, in a small district, you know, it ends and flows a lot, but this is a bit of a bumper to make that.
Yeah.
Less painful. No matter what happens, if we got a fourth outplacement, we would not only spend all of that, but we would go back to the Board of Finance and ask to one have that. We, we've been required that we provide those services and we will continue to do so. Um, no matter what that costs, but, um, this makes the. Evens out the 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 peaks and the troughs of that, we're just, it's nice that they allow us that capacity, because otherwise we'd be taking a hit. Every now and then. Other questions?
And you can see that this is.
Okay, someone wanna make the motion?
I'd head it. We could try, um, I moved that we try, we transfer.
They're used to right there.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Oh, that's much easier.
I'll even make it bigger.
Oh, thank you. That's even easier. I moved that the Board of Education requests to transfer of a hundred and sixty three thousand, four hundred, hundred. Four hundred twelve. From the twenty two twenty three Board of Education budget, operating budget to the Board of Education non lax and fund.
Thank you, Anne, is there a second? Arthur, thank you. Okay, so remember, this is not our decision, this is a request for the Board of Finance to take this action. Um, so if this motion passes, Phil will then. Send an email or a letter to the Board of Finance asking this and then answer whatever questions they have at their meeting for them to be able to. Well, it's not our decision to do so, it's that we are asking the finance. Are there any additional questions? Okay, seeing none, uh, we'll move to a vote, all in favor of the motion to transfer. One sixty three, four twelve into the non lax and fund, signify by saying aye or raising your hand.
Aye.
And it's unanimous, so the mesh motion passes, okay, moving on to the next one.
Alright, so the student activity account, so, um. This is what you do annually, the student activity account for each school is is reviewed by the board, it's reviewed by the business office. Um, this is a separate account from the Board of Ed budgets. Uh, and it's allowed by the statute, or it said that two thirty seven's school activity funds. These, the accounts are typically bigger for middle schools and high schools, some of them are in the six figures. Um, ours are relatively reasonable, the balance of the center school account is twenty two thousand, uh, one forty seven, ten. Um, they have received some charitable contributions, they've, they get their funds from the PTA for field trips. They get their funds from PTA for enrichment. Um, the library brings in money for, from the book fair, so they've got. Uh, what I'll say is a pretty penny here, um, and it's grown a little bit over the last few years. Uh, and I'll be honest, this is, this is, I've already directed them, this has gotta be lower next year, I'd like to see this under ten. Uh, because the purpose of this, this account is really to use the money for student purposes on an ongoing basis, so. Just for examples, like the assemblies, um. They may save that for one year to get more money for a bigger show, uh, but typically they're not gonna go more than two years. The, um, BSB is the, uh, the, it used to be our soda machine years ago, we get some money from the, it was the Blind Foundation. That eighty eight fifty, I already told them, send it to field trips and and let's, uh, end that account. The donations, memorials are specialty things, um. They're looking at a piece of equipment that they got some ARCA funding for, that is more than the cost of what they got in the ARCA funding. So they would, could use some of this, um, direct for kids. The field trip money, in my opinion, should be at the end of the year, should be zero. Um, or very little in there, what happened here is they got some funding during COVID. That PTA still kicked in some money, and so if a group doesn't go on a field trip, we're rolling that into that group for next year. Um, and so. I've already said. If the PTA gives seven fifty this year, you take that amount too, you're gonna get eighteen dollars on a field trip this year as a parent, which. From my perspective, is it, it's a good time to do that. Um. The library, uh, you know, does, they've gotta buy some books, uh, that's not a problem for Amy. Uh, the miscellaneous rainy day fund is a, is is a unique one because there's a bunch of items that go into that. Um, and we do all sorts of things, that's where your smaller items come out of. Um, some of that is where, like, they have their staff dressed down days, they donate money. A family has a house fire, we donate a gift card to them, some of those things come out of that account. Um. Again, it's all audited, you can see where it's going to, it's meant for kids. Um, and, but their account is a little bit higher than, uh, we typically see for center school, almost, it's almost. Always, it always happens that hall school's higher. This year, they're half of the center schools, so. That's the center school one. And you can see the hall school one, typically they have more lines in the middle school, high school ones. Same concept, so whether it's gift money, um, we're actually expecting a check from. Um, there's potential, we're gonna be getting a check from Lilly. As they end in town, that some of that money is gonna go into our baseball account, that would then be for our softball and baseball teams. Um. Things like that come and go, we pay our, uh, sports officials out of this account so they can get a check that day. So we write a check out of it and then the Board of Ed budget reimburses the student activity account and pays it. Um. But you can see, it's, it's pretty straightforward, what comes in, what comes out, um, what goes out, a lot of field trip items. But you get the sentiment, once you see center schools, this is pretty straightforward for all.
Any questions on the student activities, Arthur?
Uh, I have a question, so I probably should have brought this up on other, Phil, I apologize, but this is actually a good, good spot to bring this in, and I'm gonna put you a little bit on the spot here. Uh, I apologize, but I was, um, at the ARCA meeting last Monday and we still have. Some outstanding funds for research equipment and extended learning opportunities, and you mentioned it, um, here as part of an equipment purchase, um. Is that, is any of that incorporated here, is that something that the administrators know how to request funds for?
So they went through, um, they went round and round what to do with the money. Um, and and Lisa was gonna just do general equipment and she ended up having money and didn't use the ARCA funds. But the kids still got the equipment. They settled on adding a, a small climbing wall station, that's, uh, a fixed climbing wall station outside. Um, and so, but it's over the three thousand that she had, Mary Kay's already spent hers, um, and so. The funds from this student activity side will be the balance, it's the install.
Okay.
Um, it's, I think it's like thirty seven hundred dollars or something like that, so. That's their plan, they're gonna, they're gonna install that, so they're in the process, we have to make sure. Um, where they were thinking it, we wanna make sure the septic D boxes are are not there. Uh, we wanna make sure safety wise that it flies off the swing, they're not gonna hit someone in the pipe wall. Like, we're in the measurement phases to make sure before we pu- purchase this, we know exactly where it's going. Know what we're doing until those funds, so that is the hundred percent of the plan at this point in time.
Right here, um, anything on the extended learning opportunity, are there still?
Uh, we actually met with, uh, the group that, uh, came last year, NASS. Um, we actually met with them, I wanna say it was last month then. Not this week, last two weeks ago. Um, and went through, there, there were, we met with them just to see what their offerings were that were not necessarily one shot deal. Um, and so we're looking to see if we can have them, um, do, like, hey, what would, if you came out five times, what would that look like? To build upon a standard or, you know, just some of the one and done are, are, they're great activities. Um, they're fun. Uh, maybe there's a, it's a little less of a learning opportunity, you know what I mean, it's a, it's a good culminating event. Um, and so we're, we're trying to see what our options are with them, they have some great onsite field trips down there. Um, and so that's, we literally just about will done, so.
Okay, that's good to hear, just wanna make sure that that's not getting forgotten.
No, let's, we like the, we like that type of fun.
What is NASS?
It's New England Sailing and something, uh, it's, but it's not, do you remember the other F's?
No, I know, I mean, I know, it's NASS, right?
It's NASS, yeah, but it's not, and they always, they open, right, they open their presentation, they say, honestly, we're just. It's just our name, we're, yeah, science and sailing, it might be, I don't know what it is, but they say, we're not just sailing. So they were in, uh, the river with the kids, they did some dissection, they, I mean. It, they did some really great opportunities.
I had to look it up, I couldn't do it.
Great opportunities, so it was an opportunity for us to kinda pick their brain about what they could build and they're willing to build something for us. Um, one of the things that I asked about was, we looked at our science scores. Um. Just over the past years and said, if you can target anything that's connected to the test.
Mm-hmm.
That's also fun. Like, two, two birds with one stone, I would love that. Um, and so they, they definitely thought there's, you know, they could look at that, so we're in contact with them, just trying to figure out. But I will, I will let you know on, I had, uh, updated, you guys, a lot, thanks for asking.
Okay, and I hear one other thing too, I just don't know if there's any update on last month's, I guess, I, we're kinda. We're still in financial, it's kind of in the right territory, but, uh, about the, uh, overage of funds we had in the school and funded, whether we can do anything with the, these or anything?
Um, I haven't heard.
Okay.
I haven't heard. I did ask.
Okay.
Yes, Stephanie, that.
Laura, so, yeah, and you, you, I think you kind of explained this at the beginning, but I'm not sure that I understand. Where the money comes from for the deposits.
So. If it's a field trip, kids, we, we say it's field trip is twenty dollars and they're going on one field trip that day, that year. Uh, and the PTA is giving us seven fifty, we take that right off and then we charge the kid twelve fifty, so the parents pay for that. It comes into this account so then we can write a check to the field trip out, the other things.
The other thing, like, the sports official, like, all the.
You budget for it, so you budget for that, but we, so. We can't get a check. Ahead of time from the, for the Board of Ed to pay a sports official that day. We need like an invoice, so we pay it because we, they have a checkbook, they have the balance, they can write that check. And then we, the Board of Ed budget then gets moved in here, so that's why it should always be zero.
It's a pot of money for student activity that we approved. And then as needed.
Only really that line, though, not much.
So for example, if, if your kid loses a library book and the, the, they're gonna pay fifty.
So for example, if, if your kid loses a library book, and the, they're gonna pay fifteen bucks to replace the library book. How does the town or the school district receive the check, we don't have, this is the line that has a line for lost books. So the fifteen dollars that check goes towards this, so in case, for example, we wanted to then. Spend money on purchasing library books or more books, that can also come out of this, so it's a, it's a way, it's almost. I don't wanna say petty cash, but in an office, it would act like petty cash, you know, you gotta buy creamer for the office, somebody throws in five bucks or something, so.
It's not, it's fees and, and other types of things.
But then we get donations too, I mean, there's people that walk into my office and say, I'd like to write a check for a hundred dollars to put into the lunch fund. And, you know, we talked about that group of families that don't qualify for free or reduced, but are right on the bubble. If they can't make their payment, we just slide money into it and laser off their account, so it's like. People donate money, so there's a family, a very nice family in town that started a golf tournament, and every year, this family has walked into center school's office and. And they've checked their three grand, I mean, not, that's a lot of money for a donation. It allows us to do, like, if there's a specialty program, if there's a specialty piece of equipment. Uh, we did some mini grants last year for teachers, if you had a hundred dollars, what would you do? We could do things like that, and they wrote applications, and if you toured the buildings, you saw some of the things on the carpets, they just, you know, they came up with great ideas. And we can fund that.
Okay, so some of that funding is going, like, to things like school assemblies?
Sure.
Okay, so all of these things, by, we might have some monies, but then it's also these other donations, right, helping to pay for some of these different things, okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, alright, that is clear.
And some of the things have, like the school store, there's certain years where there'd be two thousand dollars worth of sales.
Yeah.
Because someone's running it, and then the next year, it's just like, yeah, we're not gonna do the school store this year, so that it's still there, you know. They, they were in the hole, but.
They talked about it, the question.
This, it just depends on student, honestly, some of the student interest, but. This allows some flexibility, but it has to be for students, and it has to come out of the correct lines, and it is a hundred percent automated.
Yeah. Alright, thank you.
Okay, so there's no action that has to be taken on this, this is just a report to us that we get annually, so that we are able to see what's, uh, different, those numbers are not out of line with numbers we've had in past years. So I know you wanna find more balance with it, but there's nothing, you know, unlike the school lunch fund, where there, there is an imbalance, that was a typical year, huh?
Good question, um, on the HMS. Did the sixth and seventh graders not take field trip question? Cause I see fifth, and I see age where there's the in and out, but there was nothing for sixth and seventh.
Honestly, I don't know that off the top of my head, they might not have, and so if there's funding, and this is, I literally just said, you know. So if they didn't, I have told them their money follows them, so that way it doesn't stay in the fifth grade account. Um, and so, and that happened to both schools, so. Um, there's a grade in center school that didn't go out, they did in-house thing, but it wasn't as expensive, and they had a little bit of money left over. So those kiddos that it was only five dollars a head, and so there's two fifty in that child, in that child's name, we transfer that to them for third grade. So that way, there's, again, we're trying to, yeah, have that money, so that way the same group of kids are, you know, are missing out on something.
Is something placed so that all the kids get an opportunity this year?
I, I think that's the idea, yes.
I think we're coming out of COVID now, I.
There's.
Last year might have been a little bit, you know, maybe the same, maybe it's not, but I think this year we got a little bit, we're gonna kind of get better too.
There's definitely more conversation about it, for sure, and the principals have heard that from me, and they honestly, they heard the feedback from parents as well, you know. Uh, if there's not a, a specific thing, we did some other things to kinda make up for it, um. But it's, so, it's totally different, taking a, a boss and I, I.
In terms of field games.
Yeah, and we, yeah, yeah, we did too, and so that's, you know, that's why I say, we need to make that response and make sure that money follows kids. So that way they can, they can sort of, listen, it might take ten dollars off the field trip as opposed to, you know, just some.
Okay, so let's move on to new business, first for new businesses, we have two sets of minutes to approve. That were included in your packets, the regular meeting minutes for September meeting, and the ad hoc facility committee meeting minutes, um, also together.
And I just made a note, uh, I, it was in the beginning, I, I'm gonna ask you to add an agenda item to approve the meeting minutes that were sent to you. Um, for nine, twenty-seven, twenty-three, that ad hoc committee, I think those went out to you as well.
Yeah.
But they're not on this agenda, we missed it, so if you wanna add it, you could add it last as item H, H.
Why wouldn't we add it just here, I mean, you could do it as a consent agenda, and we did consent agenda.
You do whatever you want.
Okay, so I move that we amend the agenda to include the meeting minutes for September twenty-seventh.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe, yeah, committee meeting. Sorry, thank you, Arthur, um, any discussion or questions? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of amending the agenda, um, to make that. Number C, so that all three of those meeting minutes can be done at once, signify by saying aye or raising your hand. Aye, okay, it's unanimous, so right now, we have three sets of minutes to approve. Uh, we can do them all at once, if someone would like to make a motion to that effect, um, unless someone has, uh, changes that they wanna make or discuss there.
Could we do them separately, despite you?
You can, I think you accept any of this. Okay, oh, I see what you're saying.
I wasn't at the regular. We just accept the minutes, so we don't have to, yeah, I agree.
Right, this is, this is just accepting the minutes, so you may abstain if you'd like, and we can do them separately if you'd like, but we don't have to abstain if you're in a meeting. So that's, otherwise, we'd never get any of our committee meetings asked, cause there's only three of us that's really, so. Um, so this is, the motion is to accept the minutes, but we will do them separately, so, um, who wants to? I'm ready, I'm having a motion to accept the regular meeting minutes for September twenty-twenty-three. Thank you, is there a second?
Awesome.
Okay, thanks, Brianna, questions on that one? Okay, all those in favor of the motion to approve our regular meeting minute for September twenty-twenty-three, signify by saying aye or raising your hand.
Aye.
Abstentions, thank you, Donna, Nays, okay, motion passes.
You have to do a roll call.
No, that's only when you're online.
Yes.
So being in person makes us more.
I make a motion to accept the ad hoc facilities committee meeting minutes of September, so do we need a date, the cluster to move them now? It was September twelfth.
September twelfth, twenty-two, three, thank you, is there a second?
One second.
Thank you, and, questions on the September twelfth minutes? Okay, seeing none, all in favor of the motion for the September twelfth minutes to accept those, signify by saying aye, raising your hand, aye, or passage unanimously. Okay, next one, and I'll make a motion to accept the ad hoc facilities committee meeting minutes of September twenty-seven.
Twenty-two.
Okay, a second. Okay, Arthur, thank you, questions on the September twenty-seventh minutes? Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye or raising your hand.
Aye.
Okay, passage unanimously, so thank you, moving right along, next is under new business, the CES chimney issue, taking away though.
Alright. Sure, this is gonna be a very nice, beautiful picture. So. We're having issues with the, the center school chimney, uh, it's been going on a little while.
It is number one.
It is number one, and in any classrooms, and the folks that went on a tour recently saw this, so, um. We've known about this for a while, but it did not look like that, and it has gotten worse, um. So, it appears that water's getting into the chimney somehow, uh, we're not sure i- if it's coming through the mortar or down through the chimney. This is the classroom that is next to the chimney. At the end of last year, when we had some bums up, we actually, this is one of our projects that we were looking to try and accomplish. Um, and no, number one, it's, it was very hard to get a mason out, and number two, their timeline, uh. It was not even close, they were like, yeah, I can't do it in the summer, um, and so this basically is what's above the ceiling. Um, so when you take out the ceiling tile, you can see the chimney right here, that's the brick. And then there's a thin layer, layer of like plaster or border, I'm not sure what it is. Um, it's not clear where the water's coming from, it is clear that the wall is wet. Um, and so, last year, basically, uh, we knew it was damp, but, uh, not that it was anything like this, I think it's gotten worse with all the rain we've had. And so, we had two, we were able to get two masons out. What I will tell you, um, that came out is the one that did all the sealing for us, at center school, around all the window caulking that they did. Um, and they, they also seal mason, masonry items. Um, they gave us a quote because they happened to be there. The second quote, we had a mason come out, um, and we had to pay him to get the quote, we paid two hundred and fifty dollars for his time. To come out and get a professional quote and, and tell us what he think was going on. And so I'll tell you, the range for the quotes was twenty-four thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars to sixty-eight thousand eight hundred and eighty-seven.
Guess which was which?
You can guess which was which, um, I don't think they're for the same level of repair, I'll be honest with you. Uh, and so you kinda have, and I'll show you, just so you understand what I'm talking about. This was, uh, the, the, literally the line that was in, and, and paid no attention to the forty-seven thousand, cause that's with the, with the window caulking. This is pressure wash, grind out old mortar, repoint, seal brick around chimney, um, with this, this sealer. I looked this up, it is a process that, that is legitimate, that, um, may make the change, I don't know, but they're not. They're not taking, you know, any roofing there to get lower, which is where we see the dampness, um. The other quote, the more expensive one is the Sisio, um, their masons, um, you read what they're gonna do here. Uh, this is probably more along the lines of the repair that you're looking at. I don't know that I can get another quote to match this, um, we have, this is the problem with trying to find vendors. This guy is probably doing this, this is like jump change to him, this is nothing, the projects that these guys are doing are half a million dollars or more. Um, where they're making significantly more profit as profit, as opposed to our smaller, sorry, sixty-eight thousand dollar chain. Um, this was, you're kind of at some, uh, crossroads for choices, uh, you can do a few things, um. We could, and this has gotta be a summer project, unfortunately. Um, because of the amount of work that has to come down and, and open things up. Um, but he's the type of company that you're booking six months out anyways. So you would be planning for July one, now here's the challenge with that. You could pay for this out of non-lapsing funds, doesn't go anywhere else, you make a call on that. Um, and we move forward, I make sure he's still good out of this quote, that's one option. Option two is you put it into your capital improvement plan, um, but you're not gonna do this until twenty-twenty-five. Because by the time it's approved, he's gonna go, unless you wanna use some of your non-lapsing fund. As a deposit to say, we'd like to book the job, but it's risky, because if it doesn't pass that budget. I don't know what to tell you. Um, and then, the third option is to you, to go through and use some of that million dollars that's out there right now. It's gotta go to town vote, it's gonna be a little bit slower, but it's, it's another avenue that you could do, I just. During heating season, you need that chimney, I don't think this work can be done, um, with the amount of work it is, this is a summer job. Uh, I can ask that again, just to see if there's any way, um, the other thing that we could do, that's kind of an addition, is cross these two together. Is ask the company that would typically do this, the, the other portion of the project, they were gonna take out some of the grout. Can they just spray it and try and seal it, we're gonna take it apart anyways. Um, I could ask if that's an option, it might be more expensive, but just like the roof patching, it might buy you time.
Um, could you go back to those pictures?
Yeah.
When was the picture taken, is it a recent photo?
That's within the last two weeks.
And it was different when we went on the tour, it didn't look like.
So we, yeah, it was sealed up, um, and, and, and I don't know if it was sideways rain, but this was in the last couple of weeks, we came in. And all of the paint, and there was actually.
That plaster?
Plaster, um, that had crumbled, and it's just, it, it.
So can you describe where this is in the classroom?
So, when you walk into, uh, it's in the upper hallway, it's the first classroom on the right, um, I love that it says learn right below that. And that was not intentional, uh, we have obviously cleaned that up, and, but we can't seal it. It's, the concrete is still wet, and this is when you're walking to the classroom, um, you have the full bank of windows, it's all the way to the right. On the wall and the chimney, so it's the core of the building is like this, that chimney is right here, and that's right in the corner of that classroom.
So.
So that is between, and that chimney is between the boys' bathroom, where there's bubbling on that wall. It's not, doesn't look like that, it hasn't crumbled.
Yeah.
Yes, there's bubbling on that side, and this side is, is significantly worse.
So it doesn't still look like this, because you've remediated and taken the paint off, there's not, you know, flaking paint falling on the.
We cleaned, we cleaned it up as best we can, but I mean, it's, it's.
It's still wet.
What is the black, what is the black?
It's just wet concrete.
It's concrete underneath, so it's plastic.
Yeah.
You know, concrete or mortar. Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's, I mean, you can see, like, it, and it might be plaster, I, I, honestly, I don't know. This doesn't look like plaster up here. But, there's definitely plaster on this wall.
It looks like it's concrete or mortar with plaster with paint, and all that's left is the black part is the wet solid. Right, so they can't, they can't take, we can't take that off, we can scrape the paint and the plaster off, but we can't. So there's not things falling down on kids' heads, it's not a, uh, an active safety hazard at this point, other than the possibility of potential mold if it's gonna dry out.
That's why it was good to open up the ceiling and look, and that, and we didn't see any mold, but, I mean, obviously, that wall is wet.
And it's not gonna stop raining, or snowing now for September.
Yeah.
I'm really, really concerned about this, because somebody who has asthma is allergic to mold, and I know I'm not the only one, I know there's a lot of kids that have. Allergies and breathing issues and asthma, in addition to whatever additional flakes and debris is gonna come down. And the damage to the boys' bathroom, this has to be sealed, we can't wait. For it to get worse and say, well, it's only bubbling a little, I mean, that's, that's. I can't imagine a parent wanting their child in a room with that stuff running, I don't wanna be in that room.
This was days before curriculum night, just so you know. They saw it.
It's a real problem, and then, as you know, when water gets in, it finds a chemical least resistance. So I don't know where that is in relationship to any outlets or anything, any other mechanicals, um, it could be getting damaged also.
It's on the same wall as the comedian boards.
It is.
Like, when the students are facing the front of their classroom, with their beautiful comedian boards and their alphabets, and where the teacher. stands typically, it's right in this top left corner, and it's huge.
And it's where the, one of the two quantities to the, on that wall, right? So is there another company that can come and do some remediation? I mean, I, I know that, um, if somebody has a fire, um, or a flood in that way.
Like there was the study at the van or.
Your, your circle's the throw, it's passed, we just, I don't know if there's any more that we can do to clean it. It's just wet, and it's gonna remain wet until we do something about it.
Right, but that same company might also be able to bring in, you know, giant dehumidifiers to suck the moisture out in time for you to seal, you can't seal. Something that's wet, cause it's not gonna stick to it, but there are, there are processes, there are processes to dry it out.
Yeah, that's right, but you can't, they can't see like that for another month. Or another week, it's.
Yeah.
I just don't know how wet it is on the other side of it.
Okay, so I think we have three questions before us, one is, do we set aside money for, um, remediation, how much and from where? Um, and then what do we do about the repair, how much and from where, in terms of account, so there's really two pieces to this. Um, I'm happy to, to, we could do it all in one month, we can have a conversation about them separately, however you all like the. Believe, Arthur?
I have a question, I don't know if this has an hour, if you wanna.
Ask it now, we're just trying to figure out the right approach, that we can wrap our arms around it.
So, you usually, you weren't sure where the water is coming from, so theoretically.
So theoretically, you're gonna come in, we could be dry and they could seal it, and the water is still coming, but they're gonna seal the wrong spot. So I mean, to me, this looks like just it has to be taken out and rebuilt back up by, by somebody professional. Uh, because I think that's really one of your only solutions here.
You can see, so this section is in the section that has brand new roof. Um, we walked up there and you can see the caulking is right to the chimney. The guy that came and gave this more expensive quote said it wasn't done properly. But I don't see any problems where water could get in. What I can see is, I can see holes in the mortar. I mean, you can blatantly see where you could probably just stick your finger in, in. So, and I also don't know what the cap looks like. Because it's, it's tall though, and there's not really a ladder there. So, um, but there's definitely spots where the mortar is.
And then these resistance means it could travel through the mortar and through the.
Correct.
I'm just concerned about spending money for a patch job that doesn't end up working.
And we're looking more again at like how big of a band they, do we wanna start it?
Yeah.
I mean, I absolutely agree with you. I think we need to completely fix it, but I also agree with you. We've gotta do something right now until the summer, when it can be fixed. Well, it seems to me like using the non-lapsing fund is our best bet to be able to get started on this right away. To remediate the problem.
To whatever, to fix it. Yeah, I think, well, there's two things that I.
Yeah, there's, there's, there's the.
There's the bending, the rest of it.
And then there's the fix it for real.
Right.
Um, part of this, um, that may not be able to happen until the spring or summer. So there's a, there's a. A time lag, but we don't want kids in a classroom that, you know, is gonna continue to be damp. So we have to, we have to address something now. But the question is, how much do we wanna authorize for Phil to go ahead and spend it out of the chicken? Done? So, couple things. One is. It's a chimney. You said there's holes in the mortar. Is there a risk of fire because of whatever comes out of the chimney? I don't know enough about the systems.
I don't either.
Um, but if there are holes in the mortar, um, is there a risk of fire? That's an important thing we need to know.
I think it's less a risk of fire as crumbling and, you know, the, it, it falling down before the, 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 you know.
This is out of.
I didn't get that sense from him when he looked at it and the quote that he gave.
And how long does he say it will take him to fix it?
I could find that out. I mean, we, we thought we had time to do this through our C I P process and book.
No.
Uh, not based upon the pictures.
Okay.
And, and if it's, if it's gonna take, I'm making this up, if it's gonna take him two weeks to do it, is that something that we've done over Christmas vacation? Can we get some?
I don't know.
And I don't know whether, why certain things you can't do.
Yeah, they can remediate it inside. They can't redo the stuff on the roof and the mortar during the winter. Okay, so the question is, if we. A lot, I'm just gonna throw a number out and we can figure out the right numbers. If we say we wanna spend twenty thousand dollars out of the non-lapsing fund. To remediate this problem as soon as you possibly can get somebody in to seal it. What's, what's that? What could that number be? Or how much? We don't wanna wait until November at our November meeting to come back and say, oh, well, it wasn't enough. We didn't get enough quotes and it was too low. We know you're gonna be a good steward and give us the money back and, you know.
Yeah.
But do it right. In turn, not just have your guys go up with, you know, ceiling coat. We're gonna hire someone that's gonna come in and do the.
I think we could add, I mean, Servpro and Service Master are the two that, I mean, we've had floods at tour calling.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, uh.
Yeah, so we can get quotes from them, but move fast on the remediation, dry it out and seal it.
The other thing is, honestly, I think it's about time we bought our own commercial dehumidifier. I bought a dehumidifier, uh, uh, of what I'm gonna call a homeowner one for three hundred bucks at Hall School. When we had our last pipe break, um. We should just have one in district this. I mean, it's probably three thousand dollars.
So we could, we could lump that together.
Fire all.
With the remediation and.
And use it, they could use it in summer when they wash the, the rugs. It's not like it will just sit.
Fair.
Um, but I, I'd like to get, if we can get. I, I think I see two prongs, Michelle is the way I see it, is one is. What can we do? So if you purchase a, a commercial dehumidifier is one. Uh, it's gonna be sized to the room. Uh, two is, um, getting someone like a Servpro or Service Master, someone like that. To identify, how do you buy us eight months until July one? For us to be able to do the full, this type of repair, where we tear it down and, and put it back up. And if they say, honestly, there is no short term, because it is a chimney and you do have holes in it. Then we're gonna have to figure that out, uh, and can they do that type of work sooner than later? I don't know if he has. I mean, do they do powdercrete work in a freezing temperature? They, they put blankets on things. They put heaters on things, but on a chimney mortar, I'm not so sure.
I wouldn't wanna, I wouldn't wanna risk trying to do something and then having to redo it when it doesn't fix.
Like a property foundation. They, they should be able to tell you what they can do and what temperature it has to be.
Yeah.
You know, just like, you know, do, if certain, when the pavement plants close.
Well, when the humidity is to.
Yeah, so whatever the parameters are weather wise, they should be able to give that to you. And then you can tell whether or not it's something that. Could be done, but I don't know how. Long the process is, you know, it's a two week process or a two day process.
I mean, I could also try and pay someone again, for them to come out, it's like two hundred and fifty dollars is nothing for them. It, it's like.
Put it each for their time. It's not, yeah.
Right, um, you know, I could try and see, Matt has really struggled trying to find some of these vendors, Masons. I mean, the, the contractor for the sidewalks, you know, how hard it was to get those quotes.
Yeah.
This is that same trade. Um, so I think if you're gonna kind of go in three blocks, one is you buy a commercial dehumidifier. Two is you make sure we, uh, have funding. So we can sign a contract in your November meeting for a July one fix, so you can book the person. And if I can, if I have to pay for additional, you know, somebody, additional contractor come out and get me, if I can get another quote for something else. That would allow you to November. The biggest. Unknown for me is the, what's the short term fix? What's gonna buy us eight months? The roof patching worked really well for us, but it's the same type of company. I don't know if they're, what they're gonna say. If there's a, you know.
Okay, so what I'm, what I'm feeling everyone is that we want it fixed. We want it remediated. Right away. Um, so how about, um, we take this in three votes, one on the dehumidifier. Um, to come out of the non-lapsing fund. And, um, the second one on the remediation and service master, a certain amount to have them come out and, um.
See what they can do.
See what they can do or have them clarify that, you know, this type of a seal that we had from the one option. They could do, you know, this to get you through eight months or whatever. There might be a, an option. Like if they give Service Master, I don't wanna say the Service Master has to be the ones who do the sealing. Service Master could dry it out. So someone could come and just do the sealing, but to remediate the problem to get by, get us through the winter. And if, 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 if they can't, we'll know that and we'll, we can even call a special meeting if we had to. Um, you know, I don't, I hesitate to do that if we can't, you know, take it head for it up. And then, um, I would be inclined to request it out of the million dollars so that that, we don't have to wait for. That's in this year's budget.
We have to go to town meeting.
Well, we have to go to a town meeting, but we know we're gonna have a town meeting sooner or later. So if we can't do it till the spring, it would be enough to move us forward.
I think the earlier you can book that work, the better off. I gotta make sure that he's gonna honor that price.
Yeah, so you've, you've got a little more, a few more things to check. We have to get a, a real number before we went to town meeting anyway.
Yeah. Yeah.
I have two questions. Um, number one, the twenty-four thousand dollar fix. Could that serve as a temporary fix if they're sealing it?
It could. I just don't know where the water's coming from. And I don't know if they do anything internally.
Yeah.
So, uh, without, I mean, I, listen, this is that first line. I have to go up and see things. I climbed up on the roof. I was looking at the caulk. I was looking at the brick. That chimney is up there and we didn't put a ladder on the chimney to go look down. I don't know.
I would not urge you to put a ladder up against the chimney.
Chimney.
Yeah.
Have a drone.
But some sort of restoration company should be able to.
Yes.
Give you an assessment and go, look it, I mean, they have fixes for when you have a fire to keep the water, the, the rest of the water out. You know, sometimes it's a tarp. Sometimes I just don't know if the tarp is appropriate. They had a chimney with holes in it with heat.
But the restoration company will know that.
Right, so if you were gonna do some sort of, I can, you know, talk to, I, I can talk to a couple restoration companies, just get their feedback. And I've worked with them enough, quite doing it for free, just to give us a sense. And then what you're gonna pay for is the work.
Fair enough. My second question is, do we need that non-lapsing fund for special ed or would this be okay? And then we would just go to the board of finance if we needed?
I think you still are gonna, you don't have a big buffer after those two. I don't see you having a big buffer. You max out the account at two sixty, two seventy, whatever it was. And you pay for two out placements. You know, the average out placement is a hundred thousand dollars, a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah.
You get seventy percent of that money back after you spend ninety. So you're gonna spend a hundred eighty thousand dollars, in my opinion.
Yeah.
I don't know that that's the way it's going to turn out, but that's gonna leave you, you know, ninety thousand dollars ish in your non-lapsing fund.
If, if we get the reverse, that's more waiting.
But we, that we.
Yeah, could we, there's another option, right? Could we? Ask a town meeting when we ask for the fix, also for an amount for the catch to reimburse the, the money you already spent on it.
It's all part of, it's, it's fixing the building, part of that million.
Yeah, but that's what's all right.
It's a request. It just has to pass down meeting.
So, so if we spend it out of the non-lapsing fund, there's nothing that, um, will say that we couldn't reimburse ourselves back into the non-lapse.
Okay.
Right.
That's good. We just thought we shouldn't wait. We shouldn't wait until we like get approval at a town meeting. We wanna move fast on this and that's the pot of money we.
It's the restoration side of it.
Yeah, done?
My concern about buying a humidifier. With that large is, is. Is there somewhere where it vents? Or did, or does it collect, like a home dehumidifier just sucks the money, water out of the air, cup goes into a bucket when somebody has the bucket?
They're hosed. They're all, they all hose.
Well, and, and, and that.
They hose to the sink.
Okay, cause I just wanna make sure that like we don't have that windows open and all sorts of others. So.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They were dealing with, you know, something that can't be used except for.
I've seen them enough now that we know, and you can rent them, right? You can rent them right in town. We looked at doing that, but it was just like, we're, you could use the dehumidifier. Might as well do it.
Yeah.
So.
One, one other question. Um, we know that there's not letting the paint.
I don't know that, but I don't think.
Uh, to the.
I, I'm gonna tell you that based upon the color of the paint, that everything is nine thirty-two. I do know the number of the paint, um, that I don't think that's an issue.
Okay. But.
Let's change the space down to nineteen seventy-four, so it would only be in places that, not the.
The original?
Yeah.
Yeah, the contractor.
Is there a air, air purification?
There's an air purifier in there. And they're, they're all on the exhaust upstairs. Yeah, those are all working next door to our building box.
Yeah, are we ready for a motion? Anybody have strong feelings about it? We want to give the drive. Okay, I move that we allocate up to four thousand dollars for a adequately sized. Commercial quality dehumidifier. To use in the school systems.
Wrong.
From the non-lapsing fund. Thanks. Okay, now we can have our discussion about it. I jumped in there, sorry.
I wonder if the motion should be amended to specify we can operate. In the largest room in the building, so that way you don't get one that won't say operate in the classroom, but can operate in the library.
You know, that's a, that's a really good, um. I, I, as friendly amendment, I would accept that.
Yeah, part of that. I'm just wondering if it's, if it's large enough for the library, is it okay to put it into a classroom? Or is it?
Well, it's not gonna be in the classroom when it could do it. Um, if it's one of the big fans or super loud, right? We don't, so it'd be like over loud, so.
We've actually run them. They're actually not that loud.
Okay.
Yeah, you can, and you can do different settings on them. We, when we were drying out the classrooms, we had a couple of them. We had them always.
Yeah, so one that would work for the library would still work in a classroom.
We, I'll get something that's appropriately sized, so it's, it's by square footage.
Yeah, right, right, right.
And a lot of times there's a range. It's not like.
Right, exactly. Right, just like, just like hair colors, yes, yes, yeah. And it might be that some of them, you know, could dry them out in two hours. Some of them might dry them out in ten hours, but either way, two or ten is still fine.
It's gonna be.
Right, um, and it's just no matter how fast it works. Um, so, um, the, we would adjust the amendment for adequately sized.
My other question, I think, would this be used between both schools? Can we get one for both schools?
Yeah.
I would put it.
Not one in each school, one that you could move between schools as either.
And they're able to move.
Well, I'm sure it's heavy.
We have, we, the town trucks, that they have the piece on them.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, all those in favor of the motion to buy a dehumidifier signify by saying aye. Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, part one. Part two is the remediation. So the question is, um. How much do we wanna set aside for this? Do we wanna give a, a higher cap so you can move ahead more quickly with this? And would it also come out of the non-lapsing fund? Does that make a lot of sense?
Yeah, cause I don't have twenty thousand dollars remaining in budget right now.
So is twenty thousand dollars the number that you would feel comfortable with going back to them to, to do the remediation or does that seem?
I don't hope it's not more than that. I, I mean, I, I hope it's gonna be a lot less than that, just to buy us time.
I would think so too.
Well, that estimate was twenty-four something.
So that was a seal.
But that maybe is that what we need to tide this over until if Servpro or Servmaster doesn't have something better to offer?
Some of that was also grinding out a little bit of the concrete in the mortar. There's a little bit of like, you know, not going up and touching it, but I think there. That what we're looking for is a little bit less than that. That's why I was thinking the twenty thousand, so that it was about.
If you said that.
Yes.
If you said that and you tied it to not just the restoration, but maybe it's to get a quote. To pay someone to come out for a professional opinion, like this is the right way to do it. And then it allows me to go, okay, now I need quotes on this way to. Cover it to buy us time. Like, I think that's really important. It's, it's not necessarily part of the actual restoration, but you're paying someone for their expertise on.
Right, okay.
Masonry.
So, so a complicated motion that would cover all, all of those activities.
And how much money for that? Do you think that would?
I mean, I think, well, he charges for his quote. I mean, that's typically, those guys are making a hundred and twenty-five plus an hour. You know, for their time of their work, some are making, you know, more than that. Um, it's just a matter of making sure that we can have someone. And look at it and go, okay, here's, we did not ask, the gentleman that gave the more expensive quote, he gave us a fix, right?
Right.
If we act, asked him and said, we are, our intention is to, you know, go with you in July one. What's gonna get us from now until then? So it doesn't continue this in our.
So he might be able to add ten thousand onto that, ten thousand for the patch, because he knows the patch and he knows how to fix it after the patch.
Yeah, okay.
And it, to me, it's worth paying him his time to give us that feedback because you need the expertise.
Fair enough. Okay, so what number are we thinking?
I mean, that's a fair number. I do.
Twenty-five or twenty-five just to.
I mean, it's.
At this point, we, we're hoping we're not gonna stand even close to that, but we don't know yet. So. You know, we have to put a number in the motion.
I would say twenty-five and that way Phil and get the estimate, get started and.
So why don't you go ahead and make a motion?
Okay. Um, I move that, our two, um. If Phil contacts, um, Servpro or Servmaster.
Any restoration.
Any restoration, uh, restoration company to, um. Evaluate the situation and make recommendations. And also the contractor, um.
Uh, to, to, um, find a contractor.
Well, except we don't.
No, it doesn't have to be.
Okay, I'm saying a contractor to look for a temporary fix.
Um, and.
Same.
Right, and, um, set aside up to, we need the money.
Okay, set aside up to twenty twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-five.
Thousand dollars out of the.
You need the flexibility to get the quote. To talk to the restoration company.
To remediate.
To figure out what the remediation is and to actually do it, and hope that it's under that dollar.
Right, if it's more than that, we'll have to have a special meeting and then, you know, and rest it right away.
Okay. And just to be clear, the reasons why we cannot absolutely fix the whole problem right now. Include. Um. Getting somebody to come do it.
To do it, if he.
For that to happen tonight because of the season.
My.
It's the.
A hundred percent.
You know.
You, that's a great comment, if he says, I can do this for you in the middle of November.
I just want to think that should be.
Yes.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
I I just think that we find a way to do that.
If he says that, we have a special meeting with our three days notice, and we come back together. We, you know, allocate out of the non-lapsing fund, everything we have to fix as fast as we can.
You know, and then we'll worry about reimbursing the non-lapsing fund for the other expenses. So we need a second before we have this discussion.
Okay. Is what, did the motion stand? That was good, okay, is there a second?
Yeah, I will.
Okay, Brianna, okay. Thank you.
Sorry, just.
I just wanted to make sure for anybody watching, when they find out there's a big problem with this chimney situation, and it looks like that is the student's classroom. They're not thinking it's themselves, why didn't he just?
Why, yeah.
Yeah, there are several factors why we can't just.
Right, and if we can, if it turns out that we can just fix it after we get, you know, some expert restoration opinions. Then we will move ahead with all due diligence and not spend the rest of the band aid money and fix it.
Correct.
Everybody in agreement with that? Yeah.
And so the restoration company that comes in and looks. Will make sure that whatever has to happen, so that the classrooms and and the boys' room, as you said, it's.
Yeah.
Whatever rooms are affected by this will be safe for our students and staff. That's the goal.
Are there other questions on the motion?
Is someone is um. Matt, can I connect daily? I can speak.
We look at it.
I just was wondering if the progress of the problem is being monitored or documented, like daily, because that really did happen very quickly over.
Yeah. We look at all, and because they're cleaning those rooms every single day. That person is going in there every night going, oh, good.
Yeah, and if it's raining, hopefully going in.
Yeah.
And paying special attention, wasn't that injured today?
And the teacher's been very good about it, I mean, she's.
I'm thinking of her walking in every morning, like, what's happening?
And as part of the documentation, when she's gonna take a picture. Yeah, we do too. Because that way, sometimes our memories.
Yeah.
And, oh, it wasn't that thing, and it's this thing, and then the next thing you know, it's this thing. But if there's photographs on it.
Is there any hope that we could get some of this reimbursed by insurance in the way that we do when we have a pipe break?
Maybe, but I try to avoid that, because I feel like we do a claim every three months.
I'm probably gonna say it was. I mean, our insurance is gonna go up no matter how many claims we have, because we're gonna keep having claims.
Yeah.
Until we can fix the facilities issues, so.
Typically, I.
I mean, if the fix is.
When we get.
Thousand dollars. If if they say, you know, this is, it was not an act of God, it's because you've been, you know, uh. It's not reporting the project fast enough.
Yeah.
Yeah, if if it's an age-related thing, it happens to all of us, you know.
Yeah.
Okay, so consider it.
Yeah.
As an option. Okay, that wasn't part of the motion though. So this was, so. Seeing no more comment, I will restate the motion, see. So all those in favor of the motion to uh. Yeah, no, to allocate up to twenty-five thousand dollars from the non-lapsing fund, so that Phil can move ahead with. Uh, getting, getting, uh, expert opinion on how to how to remediate and repair the chimney problems. Um, hiring a restoration firm to um take care of that remediation, if it's available. Um. Um, and and if we have to do that, we cannot fix it, but if we have to remediate it. So that all of it?
That's basically it.
Yeah, that was the other part, was the one I started with.
And then we restate that, you.
And so, so that's a motion.
Okay.
On the table. Is there a second? Oh, no, I thought, I was the second, you're just, so that's the vote, I'm sorry, so was your question one that has to?
It was about.
Did I get it wrong?
We also approved. That we would come back before we approved them to fix it down.
Yes, yeah, that's right, we have a third step. So this is only, this is for the remediation as needed. Um, it may not be needed, if it's not needed, and we can fix it soon, he won't spend this money, we'll have a special meeting as soon as we can. To address it if we can fix it, but this is gonna allow us to move quickly. On remediation, if that's the best option.
So the person's gonna come in. Assess the situation and tell you either this is what we need to do to fix it. Or I know you can't fix it now, but this is what we need to do to stop further damage until it can be fixed, is that correct?
Okay. So all in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye or raising your hand.
Aye.
Okay, as a she members, like, and I did never say it a third time, cuz that did not have worked, okay. Um, so that was um. The second part. Um, the third part is the, how do we wanna move ahead with the fix? Do we wanna set, set the gears in motion for us to um move forward on that million dollars, cuz it's gonna have to go to a town meeting? And if that's necessary, we'll wanna get that moving as fast as possible, so we can book them for July first and not wind up having somebody. You know, be too busy, especially if masons are in short supply. Um, it will, we don't have a number in place, but we could put a motion forward that um.
We have an estimate. Well, we're not quite sure what remediation's gonna cost.
Well, so so we do, we we've now, we've now set aside money to remediate the problem to give us the eight-month patch.
Right.
So now it's the fix, we could do a cheap fix. And put in money for the thirty thousand dollars, we could do the more expensive bits at the sixty-eight. We could put something in in between, or something above and beyond, to make sure that it's done and done right as fast as possible. I mean, there's a lot of different approaches to this, so tell me what your, where, what the temperature is, what are you thinking would be our best approach?
I felt like we kind of discussed this, and we need to fix it properly, properly, like a one-in-time.
But we had the children in the building.
And fix it as soon, as soon as we possibly can.
Right.
Thinking that not until July first, but if you come back and says you can do it in November, so we need to get going on as swiftly as possible.
So, in case you could do it. Could we, could we put a motion forward for up to seventy thousand dollars? To fix the problem, to ask you to go to the selected to call a town meeting to allow us to spend up to seventy thousand dollars on this repair?
Good.
Can I make a suggestion that we also include the twenty-five, we replacing the twenty-five from the lapsing one? If we made it a hundred thousand. We would then, if it went over to sixty-four, we would be covered, and we could also maybe put some of the money back.
So 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 whatever amount we spent out of the twenty-five we just allocated.
Right.
Um, we would add to that amount, up, so up to the twenty-five thousand more.
Right.
Um, for the remediation, would that slow us down?
Town meeting?
For the town meeting.
Or I'm gonna tell Erica tomorrow morning about something else that's on the agenda today.
Okay.
So they're they're planning a town meeting right now, so.
Okay, so we could, seemingly, so we won't have spent that twenty-five.
So by the time, but we're we're in concrete.
Where your risk is, is if he, by chance, he comes back and says, look, if you give me two weeks of that classroom space in November. I can do it. I can do the whole project. If we go to town meeting.
Does that happen?
I don't, I can't sign a contract with him until I, you are.
Right.
Have an approval at town meeting.
So we could. Do um a complicated motion, or with the ands and ors in this.
It seems like it's not.
Or we could, I mean, just because we allocate the money, doesn't mean that we're gonna spend it.
Right.
We're just giving him authorization to move ahead on whichever possible.
To do.
So who's, okay, so do the non-lapsing fund up to a certain amount.
Knowing that if he says, I can do this for you, start tomorrow. Then you, and you're okay with the one quote I have, that's really, I don't have any apples to apples. But just reading the quote, you you know he's a mason, like, he's, we know we have an issue.
And especially if we had the restoration company come in and ride out, and we get a stretch of good weather, you know.
Right, and because if he says no, he says, I can't, I don't have anything until March. Then you still have time, and in your November meeting, you could then go, allow me to try and collect more information, and then.
Okay, that makes sense.
Obviously, I wouldn't do it, you wouldn't spend it on non-lapse, and it would just be a moot point at that point, and you would go make the request to.
Okay, okay.
We do have to agree to.
But hang on, we've got, we've got conversations coming multiple places, Anne, and then Donna, and then Laura.
Yeah, we, the children have to move to a different room, or.
I don't know.
Okay.
I already have plans for it if they do.
Okay.
Fair enough. I know about my question, was your question the same? It's very similar, is can we move the students in that classroom someplace else for a week or two, um, if they need that much time?
It it will, if we have them be flexible, we'll find a way to to do it.
Okay. Same question?
No, no.
Oh, I was gonna make one.
Now I'm forgetting, okay, I'm forgetting what my question was.
Um, so if we take this out of the non-lapsing fund, and or or we, you know, make the motion. And they can do it in November, so we pay for it with the non-lapsing fund. But we're going to need that money in the non-lapsing fund for out placements. Can we go to town meeting and transfer some of the million to cover that back into the?
I think so, yes, but they would have to have.
Long as the town.
Have to pass this or.
If it's all to go through the board of finance, yes. We, that certainly an avenue we could pursue. And if it were denied, we could always go back to the board of finance, saying. We've spent our non-lapsing fund on necessary repairs, and now we have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of additional funding that we need for an out, out district placement. So we're coming to you for for this, so we, we have multiple options for how we would pay for it, it doesn't all have to come through the non-lapse. Just the non-lapse fund is faster.
Right.
The whole reason it's there is that let's move quickly on things if we need to.
Yeah, activity funds.
I just, I just wanna clarify that. This part of the motion should be made in moving forward, we need to do essentially. Uh, almost, not almost, I don't wanna call it to restoration, but almost like a restoration of the chimney, this is not, this is not twenty-four thousand dollars.
No, this is the, this is the whole, this is rebuilding, right.
I wanna make sure of that, because I'm not in favor of that, and rather than if we're gonna do it, just.
Do it.
Not the guy who go to the.
Okay, so I move that we set aside up to seventy thousand dollars for the full repair of the chimney for use, if it can happen. As soon as it can happen.
From the non-lapse.
From the non-lapse. For a second? Donna, okay.
What was the exact quote, sixty-eight, eighteen?
Sixty-eight, eight, eighty-seven, so just shy of sixty-nine.
Can we take tax?
Can I?
But that allows us, in case something lost a little more from pain, we don't have to like.
Can I move, for the, can I move for the amount of this, like eighty thousand, add fifteen percent to make sure?
Okay. Um, I'm, I'm talking about that.
I didn't second Donna.
I didn't, I didn't like that. Okay, um, so if the friendly amendment is accepted for up to eighty thousand dollars to move quickly on this. Other questions?
I know. What hap, so when you get a quote on someone. They're just assuming everything's gonna go right. With their dollar value that they then present to, right? So then what happens if we approve eighty thousand, and they get in there, and as they giant us, that's what it's like?
It's a changer.
But then we will hold, then we will hold a special meeting, and we will have a much bigger conversation.
Alright.
And we will invite the board of finance members to come and sit in the audience in here, and so we don't have to repeat it multiple times. Yeah, okay.
And there's still that no, you.
We have to spend our millennial dollars on the chimney.
Is there any, from this particular company, I know we don't have to go in there just in case somebody comes up, but was there any sense of, or like a coverage on it? The, or any amount of time that they make this up there?
By word, to me. By word, to me.
I have to go back and look at, I just, from that perspective.
That's professional.
I know that they actually, uh, this company, they're on a, a, well, matic, and they. Monitor, I I I think they're classified as historic for buildings, and they went. Fair enough, they, when they repair things, they actually monitor, there's any movement, things you could pay extra for that. And it was, it was an article about it, it was interesting.
So they're, they know. Yeah.
That's why when I say, like, they're not apples to apples, it's not, the other company doesn't know what they're doing, it's just. That company might be doing a general ceiling for your masonry, as opposed to this person's really going in, rebuilding it, as you said, for you.
Which is all.
Yeah.
Um, moment, okay, would it be appropriate for Lisa, or you to send home a letter to the students in that classroom? Outlining of.
Which, yeah, sure.
I think I should keep the.
Honestly, now, we definitely, yeah, yeah, which is, I think, typical, we just do it to that class.
Yeah, yeah.
Actually, probably needs to be everybody, because expecting the the boys' room affects more than the students in just that classroom.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table, any further discussion?
Put it there, we're gonna tell me they will be.
If I know, if I know it.
Because then parents will know that they have an opportunity to participate in these decisions.
We, it's not something that's on the table at this point, so when it happens, we can take care of the town meeting portion. Later on, or this may not be an issue for us, we may change our mind in November based on new information. Okay, all those in favor of allocating up to eighty thousand dollars at the non-lapsing fund to repair and pull the chimney? Issue, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, pass it to the chairman of this. Okay. So that was the chimney, that was fun. Okay.
So we have twenty thousand dollars in plumbing funds for each building in the current CIP budget. Um, and to access the money, it's the same thing, just where the fund is. It's gotta go through board of ed, it's gotta go to board of finance, it's gotta call a town meeting, and they have to approve it. So Hall School is looking for their money. Um, they'd like to request the whole twenty thousand dollars for projects. Project number one is EMCOR, um, and they would be replacing the isolation valves. Under the boiler room stairs, um, and then I, project number two. By EMCOR as well, will be to replace the hot um water domestic circulators. Um, they're not requesting that because it's not needed, it's needed. Uh, this is shut-off valves, if you give a tour of me. I talked about shut-off valves being important, and every time we have a flood. I talk about shut-off valves. Um. Those two projects together are uh. Ten thousand three hundred dollars. Um, and they're separated out. For project three, they would like to use the plumbing funds to rebuild the sinking cabinetry and all the plumbing in the nurse's office. Um. Just the way the sink is set up right now, and it's got the old plumbing, it's all, all obviously, that would be uh six thousand. And then the last um piece of project money is around three thousand dollars, that's the balance. Is the classroom pipe repair, so where we had the flood, the last three thousand would be to repair the pipes there. If they can do the same project, shut off valves elsewhere. Uh, into another classroom with remaining dollars, they'll extend those dollars into another classroom. And that would either be um. EMCOR or Brett Jones, who's over, gives us a better price for the. That we can stretch those dollars, when they're already there, those prices come down for us, so, um, we would just need the the. Less expensive ender that can stretch our dollars further. So they're asking for, and I asked Donna this today, do I need to separate the projects out, and she said, no. As long as you have the answer that you know what you're looking for, you have the quotes for those, those four projects. The only quote we don't have is the flood project, um. But I think it's pretty clear that those funds are needed, because we had a flood. Um. And so that would be the full twenty thousand for for Hall School, Center School would be at a different time.
Okay, so I move that we request the board of finance uh for the twenty thousand dollars for plumbing projects. For Hall Memorial School out of the CIP funds that we're already.
Sure.
Thank you. Okay, questions? Need a bar of questions on the chimney and.
Is those, those. And before things come up during their inspection, their annual inspection to the chimney?
So. It may have, um, it also might be part of just ongoing work that we have listed as priorities, like we. Keep a list throughout for, like, this is the next thing we have money for, we need to do.
I think the circular ones were already on the list of something we talked about.
As soon as the twenty thousand dollars was allocated, this was something that Steve talked about, we need to do those, those most.
Okay.
Typically, things that they come up in their inspections are like, you know, this is a. Typically, things that they come up in their inspections are like, you know, this is a thousand dollars or this is two thousand dollars, um and we fix those on our maintenance budget. When it gets to be four, five, six thousand dollars, that's the meat there, right?
Okay. Questions? Okay, see no further discussion, all those in favor of uh requesting the board of finance for the twenty thousand dollars for plumbing at H M S, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And it's unanimously. Okay. Still on facilities, next is the facility study business.
So I can start and then if the the group, uh subcommittee wants to talk, so the subcommittee interviewed Q A and M uh on September twenty seventh. Um and then they had a public meeting afterwards to discuss the interview and their proposal. Uh Q A and M was the only proposal we received and everybody on the board now has a copy of that. Their bid was for thirty two thousand five hundred dollars. If you decide to move forward with Q A and M, you would do the same process, we've requested uh the board of finance uh for the cost of the study. Out of the million, they will determine if they feel like that's a project that qualifies or not, it's up to you guys to make that recommendation. Uh and that will come out of the million dollar V O E uh C I P project funds that's set aside and it would have to pass a kind of meeting. Uh if you wanna do that project, it is not a separate budgeted C I P project. Or V O E budget project at this time.
Um it's worth noting that the committee did discuss this um in great detail, I don't know if any of the other four of you had a chance to look at that, we did see the minutes um that were summarized our discussion. That um what the whole reason we had the conversation with Q A and M was because we felt that there was some uh disconnect. Uh at first in terms of what they thought our project was and what we had put in the R F P. This is not to just accept their bid as it is, this is to create a contract. In alignment with the R F P that we had put out there to get the work done that we wanna have done. So I don't want you to have looked at the um their bid back and say, oh, this is what we're purchasing, because that's not what we're purchasing. That was almost a request for qualifications where they showed us that they were qualified to do this work. But that we wanted it more focused on the assessment of our current facilities. And to look at what it would cost to uh repair and improve. Those projects, we're not looking for a new school and there was some confusion and discussion on on Facebook and other places. That, oh, we're going to build a new school, that is not what this is, so just wanted to squash that ahead of time because there's a lot of misinformation and a lot of high feelings still left over for the spring. That this is to give us information that we need to make good decisions going forward and until we know. What the condition of things are, we don't know how to test, invest. The money we have in a way that isn't putting a Band-Aid on something that then you feel the Band-Aid often, it was wasted money. Um because it's the Band-Aid didn't gain, right, so um. Does anybody on the committee, you've done Arthur and Donna, you were both there too, is there anything you wanna say about the the meeting and the the process?
I don't, I don't know if anybody kind of watched the meeting, I know I had my reservations about it, um and then fully because I. I like to do the comparison, but there's, but there's only one thing, it's really tough to judge. But in that moment, frankly, you expect to be able to hire, it's really tough to judge, kind of. How it was, but uh I still, I I feel a bit more comfortable, I talked to a few people around uh in the ministry, I did feel more comfortable with the image, with uh that's see what they have, the other ones.
Um one of the things that we talked about that is important that they give us. Is an idea of how long our current infrastructure will last to various components of it. They seem to have a good sense of. Bundling projects so that we would get the most of um. So things would be done appropriately as far as the timing, but also bundling things for the best possible reimbursement, which is important. One of the things we did discuss, I mean, um what we wanted out of what they do is a timeline saying, you know, if we have. Component A and component A has a ten year lifespan and we. Just replaced it three years ago, that they factor in so we can see that, okay, in seven years we're gonna have to do it and then in seventeen years. So that things can be planned well. And not as a surprise and so that we can kind of. Use the resource that we have as best possible, right, so they'd be able to give us that information.
Uh we were satisfied that um as an architect firm that does only education facilities. Um and that works with um both has in-house experts, but also works with other experts such as estimators who will give us a a really. More detailed cost of what the different projects would be, but also that they have um experts that work in. HVAC and ventilation and plumbing, so it's not just architecture, they have, they work with a variety of other firms that will help them. Assess the the conditions of what facilities.
I think if you move forward with Q A and M. Typically, when we write a contract, um it would come through the finance committee or sometimes negotiation. I would not do that this time, I would suggest that you use the same ad hoc committee because they've sat through the process. I think that group knows what was in the R F P and what specifically we want in the contract. So it's tied to the R F P and that their that group would help write it. If that makes sense. It might not, it might be some time.
I was gonna say, if it happened after the election.
It might. It would change it, but I mean, I just think from the standpoint of those, any folks that are just all around.
We'll, we'll make that decision when it comes, but I think that's the same. Okay, so I move that we ask, that we request from the board of finance um thirty two thousand five hundred dollars. To pay for a a facilities assessment study um out of the million dollars um for the end C I P projects funded that they set aside. Second you. Other questions?
Yeah, we, we did talk about in the, in the committee meeting, if there's any possible way of getting that money from the money that are being returned from the school building, if there is, talk about that.
So we go back into the bar, I start, uh to move back to the bar.
Yeah. Thanks, remember, remember, yeah, we had hoped that maybe there was money that was coming back, it all goes into the same.
Yeah, right, right, right.
But, yeah, we thought that might be faster or this. This money will have to go to town meeting.
So we're gonna make that suggestion, but the person that's gonna make the decision is the board of finance, they may go, you got fifty grand coming back and move the the. Uh they are gonna determine the funding source.
Okay, alright, so we're just making.
It would still go to town meeting, in that case.
So, 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 so I accept the friendly amendment uh to take out the where it's coming from.
I mean, that, I think the expectation is that it's the million, but if they say, no, we're not gonna take it out of that, we're gonna take it out of something else.
So, so our.
Makes the decision, we don't.
Request could be from the million, we can keep it in the request and then then they can decide whatever they want to.
Correct.
Okay, yeah, they could say yes, no, or yes, but from this.
But, but this doesn't need to go to town meeting, it goes to the board of finance.
It does, it goes, it goes for the finance.
And down means.
Did they request a town meeting to have some of the.
Okay, yeah, it's above that that threshold.
Gotcha.
No matter where it comes down.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, and maybe they could decide to put it, take it from the school building.
They know the bigger pockets.
That's their job, not ours. Okay.
Okay, great.
Other questions? Okay, um seeing none, all those in favor of requesting the thirty two thousand five hundred for the facility study from the board of finance, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously, okay, well, we're going right along. Now we're going to C I P, tell us what else is wrong with the buildings, Phil.
So, I, I nailed the rough track of this today, um and this is the earliest I think I've ever gotten this to this degree. It's really hard to do this right now simply because of where we're at with the facility study, uh roof projects, grants, things like that, so. The goal of this is really for me. To have a sense of what you want to come out of year one and two. Um and the reason for that is obviously there's some things in there that are priority. I just wanna make sure you agree with I, well, I have a priority in year one and two, because whatever is in year one, I need updated quotes for.
So basically, you're asking for some guidance for us to help you develop the C I P, but we're not at the point where we're.
Correct. So. It's not approval tonight, it's, it's really some, like, yes, I will, we're here.
Can you put it up on the. It's gonna be looking first.
Center School. So. You already heard me talk about items in yellow are priority. And you already heard, heard me talk about the HVAC grant, I was gonna do that here. The caveat to the HVAC grant is that seventy five thousand dollars is not real. That really is to hire a project manager and get the evaluation to determine what we need. I just put a placeholder in there as a number, you can kind of disregard the number, as long as you understand, I believe it's a priority. So when I say that. When we tried to do the air filtration, the air filtration setup system at the start of COVID and they were like, they popped some town, they're like, there's no way you're getting ventilation there. It was really eye open. This needs a study just for HVAC, you need to have that done as part of your grant proposal to the state. So there's money on the C X C E S side and the H M S side. I'm asked, I already asked a question, I'm waiting for a response back. What is the cost, I took, I think we paid about thirty thousand dollars, if I'm correct. For the each roof project for the um owner's project manager. To get us through that process to make sure it's done right, because there's a ton of R F Ps that have to be right on this. And the evaluation is to get people to determine, they look at everything in your square footage in your building. What's the best way to do this, look at all of your heating systems, where do you have A C or where do you not, where do you have ventilation or where do you not? And how do we create a system for each building that's gonna work best, it's gonna take an evaluation. It's gonna be more than what I think is gonna be in the facility study that you just approved. Does that answer your question?
I, I'm, I'm concerned that. I thought the facility study was gonna do this.
I don't know.
And, and if it's not, are we asking for the right facility study? Because this is another seventy five thousand on top of the thirty two five.
This is gonna be more in depth, they're gonna say to do, you have sixty thousand square feet, you only have A C in the library. To do that, it's typically around, and that's where they use the rough order magnitude to determine your price. That's where they'll do your facility study.
Why, why do we need to, why is the facility study basically being segmented?
It's, so it's almost as if they're going to take the information from a facility study and go much, much deeper and look at every single classroom. And say, you know, is, is there access to the roof from this classroom or is there not, does this have to go through the wall, how far is this from here to there to get up to the seat? It's a, it's almost a plan, so one is, one is the, the high level plan and the other is the full work plan with. The details on how and the quote, because in order to write the grant, you have to say, we're going to need. Exactly this amount, so one's kind of the, kind of the strategy and the other's the tactics.
They may say you can't, you know, I love the idea of a, of a rooftop unit, but your roof can't handle it. Your roof could only handle a unit that's ten thousand pounds, it couldn't handle twenty five thousand, so now you need four.
But can't the group that we're hiring to do the.
Not that looking to.
Why can't they do?
They're not evaluating new equipment, they're evaluating what you have. So this group here is gonna look at the, how much space do you have in your ceilings? What do you already have in place for ductwork and how are you going to, y- y- you know.
Don't we need to have the facility study done first in order to determine this?
No. No, this is, it would be totally separate, it's totally separate world, so the, the group that would, that would do this, you'd write an R F P just for proposals, like. You need to come in and walk the buildings and tell us what you think, what equipment, what would it take? Uh they have to size it based upon um the space. They, for the ventilation, you have to have a certain number of air exchanges, it is based upon square footage, how are you going to accomplish that? All of that is part of the requirement for the um ventilation or for the HVAC grant. What is unknown, Donna, is. What, or some people are just addressing the HVAC grant through a heating line, some are doing it through strictly ventilation and some are doing it through cooling. We want it through all. What we don't know is what the price is gonna be when they say, okay, if you wanna do all and you wanna take, and for Center School's a prime example. Upstairs is steam heat. If we wanted to get rid of the steam and we wanted to do a different type of a unit. What is that gonna be, what are they gonna propose, and so vendors would basically, we'd write an R F P and the vendors would say, okay, here's our proposal, then you would hear all the proposals. You could look at your annual maintenance and cost, cost of the program. What's the demolition gonna look like, how intrusive is it gonna be, that's all part of that evaluation.
So my question going off of Donna's is then, when you, when you write this proposal for the facilities study. Do you need to have them do anything with HVAC, we just leave that out of the facilities because you're going to be doing such.
You do, because that's, that's what we have now.
That's the starting point.
They're gonna say your boiler is seventeen years old, the cu- the current plan that you just approved, that's that you're trying to set off.
Yeah.
They're gonna look at all your current mechanicals, because as we know, we might decide something and then it might not get funded. And when it doesn't get funded, your problems still exist.
So they're documenting the problem, okay, but that's not needed for the HVAC.
It is, because if you could say, we wanna write an HVAC grant and not get it, and you still need air conditioning.
Right, but you said that if you don't need the, the facility studies first.
We don't need it finished.
If we don't need it for the HVAC, but we do need both studies for two different.
And remember, this is for C I P that we couldn't act on until July one anyway, so we will have information back from the facility assessment. Before this is funded, but they don't have to be, you know, one building on the next.
Yes, the challenge is, this is why this, and this is a big topic. Is that, that, where that sits right now is in year one, it's in yellow per reason. Because you would need from July one. You'd need to have your uh O P M once, i- if you. You have to have your O P M onboard. Which means they have to be hired already, so that you can get your R F P out, so you can have walkthroughs. You have to go through all the process. You, Brianna knows where I'm coming from on this, because she's lived this. It's months of time and you have to do it in time for December twenty four grant application. So you have to have all your town approvals done or the grant requirement, you have to not only have taken all of the suggestions going, here's the. Here's what we believe, you know, one vendor may say, here's how we, you can accomplish this, another vendor will say, this is how you can accomplish it. And then you pick the vendor and for the avenue, and then you have to do an R F P for that avenue. For the actual construction, not just the proposal, so it, like, when I say really tight timeframe, July one. To get to a December timeline, it's tight. Which is why you need the O P M onboard for this project to make sure that they're managing every single R F P that they can set the timeframe to go through the process. I don't know, the seventy five thousand dollars, honestly, you have to have millions there. Because it has to be the full project, because when you do the approval to, for the grant. It is for the whole project, even though it is some of its reimbursed, so like on the roof, it says eight hundred fifty thousand dollars. That's before reimbursement, I, I hid those columns just for R V today. So you get sixty three percent reimbursement, it's gonna cost you, for the Center School roof, it's gonna cost you three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars.
So this is showing the full amount of the cost that we have to approve.
That one is.
Yeah, but it is not showing that for the.
And it will, because I determined that today after I sent this out, we started having conversations about, this cannot just be the project manager.
Okay.
To, in your C I P plan, the money has to be there and you don't, you don't um tax on the full amount. You tax on the expected amount, so if you were, if, if, if there were ninety dollars, right, and it was, we get sixty three percent, you'd budget three hundred and seventy thousand.
And then you use that for the tax.
Correct, that would be the tax, so.
Yeah.
But you have to have those town approvals, as you remember, are the full amount. So in year one, and sorry to scare you a little bit here. It is a great, it is a, it is, it is a huge complaint of mine, and this is what we share with Tammy Nuccio and Jeff Gordon.
Yeah.
Because having those approvals before you know the prices is a little unfair, in my opinion. The projects that you need here. I'm looking at this, but that's not the way. There we go, so there's a second page. Not a priority down there, so I'm gonna suggest that you put another twenty thousand dollars of plumbing in. Okay, I'm gonna suggest that you put money, funding in for the HVAC, I won't have the full amount. Um and I, it's not, you can almost disregard the numbers today, because I haven't done a lot on the numbers and the numbers match. A lot of times what's in this, which is the prior orders, if there's an old number, I'm not getting a new number, if it's year one, I have to get new numbers. The chimney repair is in this, just in case, we can always take it out, depending on how things go. The solar panels are unknown, this, I don't know if they're reimbursable, I'm working on that information. It's gonna be extra money, but. It's gonna be extra money, but if you're gonna stay in the buildings, it might make sense, and the roofing, uh, you know, the state will push the solar panels on you. But it's your call. And then the roof. So. This money has to go back in. So the eight fifty is again before. It's a placeholder, but it's before the reimbursement. So those are some big projects and realistically. Putting that in July one of twenty-four will mean it's an installation of July one twenty-five, right?
Right.
Because you get the money and you won't have it in time to do it. An installation is here. So all of those things together, so. You're gonna see the same priorities for me, basically, on the whole school side. Uh, it's the same thing, roof.
Scroll down, there was a little something that was in there that was medium, a little, no. Scroll down right there.
Carpet.
A little further.
Stairtraps.
Right there. Thank you, carpeting and stairtraps.
Oh. You know, they took this out years ago, and we had an argument about this, that, you know, it's about six thousand dollars now to, to. Do carpet over a classroom. And that should come out of our budget.
The one.
You, for one.
But if, but if you do it, it, it's a project.
So what we're trying to show them is that we would like to twelve thousand in each year. It's minor, they may say, too bad. We've been doing this within the year savings. That's how we've been paying for our carpets.
Okay.
I think we should be on a C I P cycle where you just replace two carpets every, every summer.
Yeah. Just like you.
Think about the number of rooms.
Take over a certain.
And I know this sounds silly, they give this, I, I live this in town, when we talked about replacing computers. It's like, okay, so you're gonna get a new computer every fourteen years. Is that realistic? In that two carpets, think about whole school, number classrooms. Two new carpets every year, you're not gonna get a new carpet for a long time. It's just to prove a point, it's not, it's there. But. It's nothing in the grand scheme of. These other funds.
Okay, why don't you show us H M S?
So that was the same concept. So the roof, the solar panels, the HVAC, the plumbing work, it's the same exact thing.
Phil, did you notice in the HVAC concept?
Sorry, I noticed something, it's okay.
The solar panels, the makeup into HVAC, the HVAC grant?
I don't think so. I could look, um.
Sometimes they're a bit of a looping.
I s- I told Laura when she walked in, I was trying to find an answer about solar panels, and it's amazing, with all the information out there, I can't find out if they're reimbursable. I don't know if they are or not. I think people just get good deals on them and it's worth. Paying it over time, because you're gonna stay in your, but your buildings for, you know, period of time.
Stay in the residential for one year.
They do, but I was trying to find out if it was, it was, um, reimbursable through O S C G R.
Yeah.
And I can't find that answer. Well, I'll, I'll have that answer for you.
Is that a possibility?
And also have a doubt.
You can vote on this for another two months, probably.
Pro- no, you'll vote on this probably in November.
November, okay.
So that I can do the, and maybe December at the latest, that's when they like it.
Yeah.
Um, and I didn't, I'm not even showing you all the write-ups and pictures or anything. I'm just trying to show you, like, year one. Tiers of priority, because that's typically all that matters, what we're funding. I don't see how you break this off.
So we don't wanna go into a lot of detail on this, because we're not approving this tonight. Does anybody feel that there is a different priority, that there are other things or different things that Phil should be focusing on for year one? I thought. Previously, we had dealt with the. Um, box security.
You did, I moved them. I moved some things out into year two and beyond, simply because. You're gonna need. You already have a million dollars. Will be lucky if it covers the roots. You're gonna need another million dollars. You'll be lucky if that covers your ventilation. The ventilation. Might be five million.
Ventilation might be what?
I will tell you that. The grants that were written. I wrote this someplace. Ellington received six point seven million dollars in funding for three schools. Coventry, six million for the high school. So there's a chance that the ventilation is going to be a lot of money.
Yeah.
And it could be something that's fun. Now, if you, it doesn't mean you might, i- if it's six million dollars and you get sixty-three percent of that. That's pretty amazing. You still wanna apply, but it still requires them. To put up millions of dollars in your capital plan.
Yeah.
Um, and I don't know what year two looks like after that. Part of that for me is. The facility study. Help us prioritize from there moving forward.
Okay, go ahead, Brianna. I'm certain it's the reimbursement.
For what?
Like, for sure.
HVAC?
Will receive sixty-three percent.
So. I, are you talking about HVAC?
Sure, yeah.
So I looked at the, the grant and I looked at, um, the rubrics for how they're judged. And the first thing says, if you don't have any ventilation. Is, we don't have any ventilation hall in that whole. Master wing. So we get some good points for that. So I think there's a rear, they turned down a lot of schools. But there's a lot of money there. Um, and so, you know. I will also say I can't guarantee it.
Right.
So you may put that money there, and if you don't get the, you only bought, it, it's a million, you, you write down a million, you, you, you tax for three hundred fifty thousand. And then you don't get, get the grant, you're not doing the project.
But you don't have a grant.
Which is again, why you need the. Facility study, short term, how, how much is my equipment, how long is it gonna last?
Yeah.
So the roof is. More realistic that it's just, it's, you're gonna get the funding, but I can't guarantee HVAC. I think we, again, just like a reading waiver, I think we have a really strong margin.
Yeah. And every year the state sets that percentage, but it doesn't change more than like a percentage point a year. So that, that's. You know, is it perfectly exact? Do we know the exact number right now? We don't, because they're gonna come out with a new number.
That one's not different per town?
It is.
It is per town, but they come out with a new schedule of what every town's percent.
I think we're in the last year right now, or five year, and we actually go up.
Yeah.
It's the first, it's, we've never, I've never seen it go up. It's like. A quarter of a percent, I think it went up, but I mean.
Yeah. So. Okay, so I'm not seeing any other additional priorities. Nobody's got anything else burning. I think we're a little, um, over, over, overwhelmed by roofs and plumbing and chimneys and, um.
There's a lot of facilities.
Um, so we knew, we knew we had a lot of silly stuff to talk about. You know, and I'm sure it'll come up on Friday, the conversation did.
And if you, so all I say then, Michelle, is if you have feedback about what I shared today, I, and I, I. Saw that I had something in year one that was five hundred thousand dollars, I, I just didn't move the price back, to be honest with you.
Yeah.
The things in yellow are the priority, that's what I think we should have in, in year one. So if you have feelings on where you want things in out years. Let me know.
Okay, so moving on next is minimum wage, the impact on the food services. And this was impacted to the draft.
So the governor. The governor announced, uh, another increase to minimum wage, um. Which will go into effect January one twenty-four. Um, we did not know anything about this, it just kinda. Surprised us. So the food services group is the only group that's impacted by this. All of our other ones are. Okay for now. Um, I worked with the business office to kind of run a couple scenarios. The first was to give everybody. A sixty-nine cent increase, that is, it's going from fifteen dollars to fifteen sixty-nine. And so you see. This person going up from fifteen sixty-nine. Um, we just increased everybody sixty-nine cents. Right? That's scenario one. It's a hundred and six days, this is our cost, that's the remainder of the number of school days from January one on. I looked at the cost difference for the year two, I was just curious, it's five thousand dollar difference. Right? The other thing I wanted to do, because you've heard me talk about the buffer being really critical. For the people that have been here. So. I can hire someone right now at fifteen dollars an hour. And I've got people that have been here for multiple years that are not making much more than that, and they have experience. We looked at the percentage. To see what the difference was. So we, the different, the, the, um. The percentage of the increase is four point six percent. Um, that's what is the sixty-nine cents for the person to go from fifteen dollars to fifteen sixty-nine is four point six percent. Um, so I will tell you that I think that's a better way to do it. And the reason why is it keeps the buffer there for, um, it's actually small, if you just do the sixty-nine cents, it's smaller at the upper levels. The people start to get closer together, and I don't think that's right. So I think what you do is you give everybody on January one. Four point six percent increase, you can see the difference between the totals, so. For the sixty-nine cents over a hundred and sixty days is just under three thousand. And for the four point six percent to keep the, the gap, to keep the buffer. It's thirty-seven hundred dollars for the, the, um, over the, the year, it's a thirteen hundred dollar difference. We're talking about a food service budget right now that has a surplus of two hundred thousand dollars. Between that, let's keep our people, let's keep them happy. And let's keep the buffer. And so my suggestion would be to go do the four point six, four point six percent increase, um, starting. January one.
The motion? Get it started? And I move that we grant a four point six percent increase to the food service. Um, staff beginning on January first, two thousand twenty-four. The second? Tracy? Thank you. Okay. Questions?
I have one question.
Yes, so. So. In the chart. As you go down the first column from fifteen sixty-nine to twenty-nine twenty, is each. Um, row, is that like a year of experience? The, what is, what is the difference?
What I did was. I, I took out some of the salaries, because I didn't want you to identify people. It's hard to do in a small.
Right, right.
And so I was just trying to show you and, and what we ended up, we actually had one line. We, we tried to do ones like fifteen sixty-nine and sixteen-ten, but then you'd go, Phil can't do math, it doesn't add up to twenty-nine hundred dollars, and it does. So. What you're looking at are, it's the money that people are making right now. Um, and it's not necessarily.
Kind of a mix, and you just.
It's just where they are, so. It's over the years, because there's no grid. Um, it's just where we put people. So if I were gonna hire someone now with ten years of experience, I'd look to see. Who we have on staff already, that is around ten years' experience, and I align them.
Okay.
Um, and so this is just what people happen to have now, and to maintain that value.
Other questions? And these people. We had done a salary increase recently.
We matched what everybody else got with two point seven five percent, I believe, yeah.
Okay, I think this is well deserved. They came out on curriculum night and gave everybody sampleings.
Should've said.
Of some of their food. It was phenomenal. We had shepherd's pie and smoothies and, so they're doing a wonderful job.
They actually got some good recognition online, actually, about the. Their post to what they had done at regular way for that, the state level. It was very positive.
You know, they deserved it. That was way above and beyond, yeah. It was great. A nice way to say thank you. Okay, all those in favor of the motion to, uh, increase food service staff by four point six percent on January first, twenty forty-four? Signified by saying aye or raising your hand. And it's unanimous, so moving ahead, motion passes. Okay. We have. One item under old business. Um, and that is the math curriculum. Um, we had, uh, brought it up last month. Arthur, you had said you requested an extra month to look at it, so we've done so. We've asked everybody if you had questions, to get them to fill with the page number for, and the unit, because there's so many units. Uh, special thank you to the curriculum committee for getting us to this point, because it was not a light left. So let me start before we go any further, with just a thank you for those of you who did the heavy.
There's everyone. Hi there.
Okay, yeah, thanks for hanging in for the whole chimney and facilities to get them in. But here we are for Matt, okay. Um, Phil?
Uh, I didn't get any questions, so I, I don't know if people had thoughts. It was a lot. It was a thousand pages, it's a lot of curriculum.
I have the actual name.
And I think, you know, Lewis to Aaron for, I mean, this has been a long process, you know that. Um, and this is, you know, once you start living this stuff. Um, we were just talking earlier about a, a program. You, it's, we just have to keep this process going. If it gets approved tonight, the, the constant revision and making things better. For better student outcomes is really important, and so, uh, that's really the goal for it.
Fair enough. That's fair. Any other questions? That came up, Phil?
I have a comment. It was cool to attend curriculum night and see. It from the parental perspective. I've looked at the curriculum itself, but to see it. Being implemented in the classroom. And also seeing things from home and all that, so it's looking really good. Thank you, Aaron.
Aaron, did you have any comments that you, uh? Felt you needed to make, or you're here for questions?
I am here for questions. Um, but I will say, we, you know, the teachers have really been very positive about the illustrative math curriculum in general as a major resource. And we're seeing some great student progress. And, you know, with our fluency work, I think we're gonna really see some great growth this year.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Conley, for all your work. Okay, um. Do we have a motion? Math and elementary curriculums, are they separate?
You can do it as one, so it doesn't matter. All the other.
The elementary, I mean, the math curriculum, um. As written. Sure, the best presentation. Great, is there a second? Okay. One second. Thank you, Laura. Thank you, Tracy, thank you, Laura, um. No other questions?
I, yeah, I know I was the one who pushed this off, and I'm. Still unable to get through it, and then, you know, it's probably not gonna happen for, for quite a while, for maybe if I like to go through things, if I choose, and it's no disrespect, Aaron, it's no disrespect to the curriculum committee. I just one of those people who likes to do things and look through things themselves, and. Without being able to go through it in a, amount of time, I'm not gonna hold up the process at all, because I don't think that's the answer either. But I, I can't vote for it, because I haven't been through it, so I'm probably, I'm just gonna have the next scene. But, um, again, there's no disrespect to anybody's work, it's just.
I think that's the reflection process, though, right? So I think it's really important that it doesn't matter whether it's a board member. Or a teacher, or a parent, or a community member, if someone reads something at some time and has feedback for us. Think that's really important, so it doesn't, you know, once something's approved, again, that was, coming back through that process is going forward, so if you see something in the future. I think that's, that's now we wanna address this.
Yeah, that's fair. Yeah, just to add on to that, because this is something I always end up saying, like, the curriculum. Is a living document, right? It's not static, and so this is a starting point, and as, as teachers improve it, they'll have feedback, as parents see it, they'll have feedback. As we go through it again, and, right, so it, it's, it should always be a constant process. This is just an official touch point that allows us to, to say, this is the one for now, and then it continues to go. Okay. All those in favor of approving the math curriculum as presented, signified by saying aye or raising your hand. All those opposed, they. Abstentions. Two abstentions, uh, motion carries. So the math curriculum is approved. Thank you all. Um, present to speak. So I'm not sure, uh, everyone is off camera right now. But we do have time at the beginning and end of our meetings for the Board of Education, for the public in Wellington to bring their issues before the board. Uh, not for our comments, but, uh, for us to hear. Your thoughts, um, and we ask that you start with your name and address for the record and keep your comments to, uh, three minutes maximum, please. So if you are currently listening to the meeting on Zoom from home and would like to comment. Please either raise your hand using the reactions button on the Zoom screen. Or come on video, uh, turn your video on, so that we can see you physically raise your hand, and we can recognize you would be heard. Hey, going once? Going twice? Moving on to board comment, we, we, uh, we drilled them all with the chimneys, so they're asleep at their desks, watching, uh, watching us. You'll have another opportunity next month at the start and in our next meeting. We always welcome your input, uh, whether it be via email or present to speak. Okay. Uh, who wants to go first?
Okay, go ahead, Arthur. I'm going first. Um. So I don't have anything, anything written down today. I do wanna welcome those, uh, on board that, uh, hired recently or in the past. Month or two, and the other, other thing I wanna, um. Just recommend everybody, and just give to everybody here, bernadette dot charred retreat. Um, that was one of the first nights. Um that was one of the first events, an idea that got me into this whole sphere, um and if you wanna see me dressed up as Ken from the movie. But it's, the kids have so much fun, there's a ton of bins, and we do need more trumps to volunteer, but it's a great track.
Yeah, you heard it here first, folks. Okay, who else? Okay, we're gonna just go around the table, because I'm tired, I'm gonna, Tracy, you're next.
Uh I, I welcome. Our new employee as well upon. Hi. Thank you, Phil, for the very in-depth tour, I toured those buildings before, I've worked in those buildings, but I saw things. In a different light when you're looking at its facilities. Than I did in the past, and I saw all the parts of it that I've never seen, so appreciate the time spent to uh. To fill our schedules. And um give us all the, the much information we could get. And uh thank you for approving the math curriculum, and it's really exciting to see our. Forming in all the areas, everything. It's exciting to see all the things they're doing, and yeah, they just have their thoughts. So my time serving people in Wellington as a board member, board of ed members coming to an end. But my part for serving our children and families will continue. It's my hope and prayer that the next board will be able to take the necessary steps to restore Wellington public schools to their previous status as blue ribbon schools. Wanted to say thank you to the parents who are great enough to share their cares and concerns with me. And I hope that more parents and community members will participate um in the process of including our schools. And if anyone is looking for organizations um that I think speak wide and open to families, please feel free to get in touch with me, I'll be willing to share those. And, and just us as a team. Thank you.
Uh it is not officially your last meeting, because um your, your president, your. It's like the nineteenth or so of November, so you have one more meeting to go, oh, yes, so, yeah.
I thought you mentioned the annual year.
So, no, it doesn't, the, the, the next person after the election has like two weeks to get. Um sort of, and so, so they usually attend the November meeting, but aren't seated by the board. And so. So you have one more meeting, but we, I showed you.
And you had to say to go in order, so I have to follow that.
Hey, you didn't volunteer right away, you know, it's late, you gotta move, guys.
Well, I don't, I, because you've got one more meeting, so I don't have to. I was thinking, oh my gosh, what do I say now? I, and I'm so tired, I'm, I'm sorry that I'm so tired, but um so, yeah, I usually have stuff, I, I didn't check things to say, but. Welcome to the folks coming on board and, and um those folks leaving, wish you well. Uh I just wanna thank everybody for their hard work, everybody, you know. Phil, Aaron, you know, all of the, the staff and faculty and, and my fellow board members. Um it's, you know, I'm just so tired. I know, I know.
And.
Oh no, you're next.
I'm, I'm on the chair, I get last.
Um I think it's exciting that clubs are starting up again, I, I wanna thank everybody who's working hard to make that happen, and that's a lot of fun for the kids. And um. I really enjoyed the curriculum nights this year with, um I got to go to center and hall, so all the teachers are doing a fabulous job, and they thank them for all of their work, and. It was very transformative, so thank you all.
We can start with you next time, so we'll.
Joe, I just, I did wanna say that um no matter what your role, um as a member of our schools, it's not looking at that. Aaron, for it, you make a difference, the luck to miss our no, um and thanks for leaving a bit of your heart with our kids. Um. And curriculum night was on, and I always said, I was with it with the teachers, but you're right here from a different perspective. And um going back to Ken, you don't have to be a parent, right, to offer up a trophy?
No, you can.
So that's an event open to all community members, so if you want a chance to see the students of Wellington, um the kids of Wellington, and. See them in their glory, not just their costumes, but having part, and see why. Phil and the staff does what they do, and who they are targeting, then it's a great opportunity for everybody, so. So let's try to treat.
Okay, and I will just close with a thank you to my fellow board members, because you do this as volunteers and as. Uh service to the community, and I know that you spent many hours preparing for these meetings, reading over things. And a long, long nights of discussion of plumbing issues and feeling pain, uh it's not everybody's cup of tea, but somebody has to do it, and I appreciate. That all of you take time out of other fun things you might be doing, more fun than this, uh to spend time or leave us something to do all of this, so thank you to all of you. Okay, and with that, uh I move that we adjourn the meeting at nine thirty seven, is there a second? Hold on a second, those in favor? Right. And the meeting is adjourned at nine thirty seven.